It's City Council Regular Meeting for Monday, June 6th. We have a few study session topics here tonight before we get to the regular agenda. Up first is City Attorney Tamara Niles and outside legal consultant Hillary Graham to discuss the proposed administrative revisions to the city charter. Good evening, Madam Attorney.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I see you don't have a whole lot of time on your agenda and you've got a lot to do, so we'll try to truck through this pretty quickly. So after last time, I went back and did some drafting according to your direction, and we'll just walk through some proposed language that, as you know, to recap, would be presented to voters at the November 6th election, or, excuse me, November 8th election. The first one, pretty straightforward. This is not the type of change that we would go through line by line and identify every alteration, but it's just seeking general permission from the voters to update the charter, to remove gender-specific terms, and consistently use the label "council member." So that's that one. I'll just click on through unless anybody has questions. Okay. And I have noted two questions that came in that I will address as I get to them. So this next one is to change a somewhat out-of-date reference in the charter that referred to polling places, and also to keep maximum flexibility. So this would simply alter the language in Section 12 to allow elections to be held on dates and in a manner specified by state law. All right, redistricting. So we did have a question about this, and first of all, you'll see, starting here, I prepared kind of alternatives to these questions. The first would be the most broad, such as this one, that just generally seeks permission, describes the change, and then compare that with this alternative, which actually shows the strike-through language. I think it's kind of a judgment call. There's more art than science to this. Sometimes showing the actual charter language is helpful, other times it might be confusing to voters, because, for instance, in this section, you've got the reference to 1959 and things like that. But kind of to get to the meat of the issue, we want to talk about the restriction on 10% versus 15%, which is embodied in the charter now. So the charter requires redistricting every four years, and in general terms, we're saying that the 15% discrepancy between districts and population from the highest, the most populous district and the lowest populous district is impermissibly large. And that's based on a body of case law, and there's not a case that we can point to that says 10% is the key. Generally speaking, the less discrepancy, the better, and this goes back to the equal protection concern in the Constitution. So cases challenging redistricting usually challenge either, come in either under the equal protection clause or a discrimination allegation for minority-majority districts and racial discrimination. But this one would be couched under equal protection clause, and the concept is, it's one person, one vote, so that a district with more people that vote is diluted, essentially. So the goal is to have math, as much uniformity in population among districts as possible, although mathematical precision is not required. So we don't have a hard and fast rule that 10% is the magic number. We know 15% is probably too big. We could look at alternative language that says, shall the population difference be minimized as much as possible? So we don't need to key it to 10%. That's not the key. The key is to stress that when redistricting, the city has an obligation to try to make the districts' uniform in population to the extent possible. And there are other redistricting concerns that aren't touched on by this charter provision, such as compactness and other things that would be implied. So your call, Council, whether you're comfortable tagging the 10% or if you'd prefer to simply remove the 15% and go to some other more general language that says, "to the extent possible, populations shall be uniform," or "population discrepancies shall be minimized." So that's a point we need a little feedback on.
Actually, I think, do we want to give the feedback now or wait until the very end?
Okay.
Let's run through them now?
Okay, so we'll get feedback at the end.
Yeah.
Okay, so this one has version A and version B, council terms, also version A, version B on one slide. So version A is the one generally summarizing what the change would be, and version B shows the strike-through changes. This may be an instance where it's helpful to show the strike-through, because they're pretty straightforward. Council meeting location, similar alternatives here, and also maybe an instance where you prefer to actually show the change to the language that you're proposing, because it's illustrative of actually the goal, just to make this a more flexible provision. City manager's powers and duties. There's no sense showing, I don't think, the strike-through of, I think it's sub-paragraph M that actually references the airport. That almost seems to give it more attention than it needs. We would just ask voters for permission to remove it. And then another question has come up about board and commission membership. The direction from last time was to broaden this. We had initially identified the library board as one that had a kind of a overly ambitious requirement for members. So we could reduce all of them to five as a minimum with such additional membership requirements as might be set by ordinance. So commissions and boards that have nine or seven members could still have them, or boards or commissions that are set at five could be increased if there's a lot of interest in having more membership. And we can do that with this general question, sort of option A. A more specific question, which would identify the specific boards and commissions in the charter. And then option C, which I didn't do, would be to make a separate question for each. I think any of them are fine. The, I did review the current standard for the single-subject rule. There's a Colorado Supreme Court case from 2019 on it, and I think arguably, this first question does still meet it because of the consistency and uniformity of the question, all being targeted at board and commission membership. But there certainly is an argument to be made that you might want to give voters the opportunity to alter the membership requirements for one and not all of the other boards. So that would be an argument in favor of pulling out those questions and asking them separately. Lastly, I believe, we're already at the end. So this question for compliance with the Colorado Governmental Immunity Act, it is, has been founded by the Colorado Supreme Court consistently to be a matter of statewide and local, so mixed concern, which means the charter could broaden the protections to citizens, or I guess, to say that differently, could limit the immunity given to the city, but it can't, it can't do the opposite. So it could give longer notice periods, but not shorter notice periods. So the changes we're proposing here are necessary in order to comply, because currently the city has, is a shorter notice period than what the CGIA would allow. And that was pretty much exactly a question decided way back in 1983, and it hasn't been changed since. So the case law is pretty clear on that, that we can deviate in favor of providing more rights to citizens, but not less. So that also has options A and B. This might be one where I would argue in favor of the broader question. I'm just not sure how useful it is to have that language in a ballot. We might get people voting no, just because they don't like the idea that we're limiting the city's liability, which of course, we know is a very useful and necessary tool that the city has. So that's everything. Happy to answer questions or get feedback on whether, which versions you like?
Thank you, Madam Attorney. I guess we'll start with questions. Mayor Potem.
Just one clarifying question on the redistricting matter. Did you find in your research any case law regarding local redistricting in the state of Colorado? Or was this all just generally federal and much of that deals with congressional and state legislative districts?
Right. So I didn't find a Colorado state case. The closest I got was a Colorado federal case. Often, these come in under the Voting Rights Act, so it's federal. But a 1982 District Court of Colorado case referenced population equality and the absence of racial discrimination as the two prongs, which is consistent with all the other case laws. So this is a case where the federal body of law really kind of controls everything else.
And just to reiterate, they didn't provide any specific guidance in any of the case law that you found as to what the percentage deviation should be? There's just some generic guidance that says as little as possible?
Well, both. So we have a 1973 U.S. Supreme Court case that found 9.9% was okay. But since then, we've had cases that say that this mathematical precision isn't really the goal, and there's been an introduction of a new test that requires discriminatory purpose. So arguably, it could be maybe 11% if it was proven that there was no discriminatory purpose and there were other reasons. So it's really going to be a balancing test, multi-factor. And of course, all of this presumes that the city is ever defending this redistricting act.
Right, I'm just thinking about the process as it applies now. According to our municipal code, the election commission is the one who, the individuals who do this redistricting process. So it's actually performed by citizens in the city as directed under council and with council approval.
Right, which is very good, as opposed to council itself doing it, yeah.
So we have some protection there from discrimination allegations, given that we're bringing citizens into the process and then council is serving as the final check.
You do. The criteria, so that's kind of recommendation number one when we're redistricting, is to start from population and go and try to do the districts as uniformly as possible population-wise. The second recommendation is to use an independent redistricter, which you have. The third is to kind of provide guidance to these redistricters, which would be to prioritize one person, one vote, which we get back to population equity, and discourage minority vote dilution or political gerrymandering. So it's really going to be obviously a complex process, but the, it also has to coordinate with the general election precincts. So you, to the extent that there are state or county election precincts, you don't want to be in conflict with those. Compactness, contiguity, and then preservation of community interests can be one of those factors that kind of overrides otherwise, the otherwise controlling concerns for compactness or contiguity. So again, multi-factor analysis. I don't think we need to get hung up on 10%. I think we're pretty sure 15% is too great. If you want to look at language that's, you know, more general about minimizing population discrepancy, we could certainly do that.
That clarifies it for me. Thank you.
Member Woodward.
Thank you. Question on number seven, board and commissions. We have, we put a number in there of five, and I'm just thinking of something like the Water and Sewer Board, which we have three city council members on that board. That puts, if we were to get that down to five, that would put us at two citizens.
Well, unless by ordinance, Water and Sewer Board were given a greater number of members.
Yeah, and currently, that's the way it is. I'm just wondering if we ought to save five members there, excluding council member liaisons members or something like that?
You could, and this actually brings me to another point that I was discussing with your city attorney, and that's whether, once we get voter approval, presuming there is some voter approval, the changes are then enacted by ordinance. So it's possible that these types of situations where you want to be really specific, we could address by the sort of implementing ordinance, to be sure that we're accomplishing the goal, so that this broad directive from the voters would be applied and the Water and Sewer Board would have, you know, five citizen members. Or maybe we want to clarify that it's five members, five appointed members, like you said, excluding staff or council liaisons.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Member Russell.
Thank you. So I'm wondering if we should leave the quasi-judicial boards the way they are in the charter and not change them. I believe there was quite a bit of thought given to those. And generally, the quasi-judicial boards, we don't have as much trouble getting interest on those boards, so I'm kind of wondering if we should leave those.
Okay, and those would be planning and zoning commission?
Water and sewer.
Water and sewer also?
Water and sewer is also a quasi-judicial.
Are they, because they're awarding, are they awarding TAPs and service commitments and things like that? I mean, I would have to refresh on what their duties are.
Okay, and then perhaps Board of Adjustment and Appeals?
Yeah, they're quasi-judicial, for sure. So then we're down back to just the library board.
Thank you, Member Russell. Anyone else? Member Anderson.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I would, just to weigh in on this one, I like it as-is personally. If we want to increase the number and just do it in an ordinance, subject to if this passes or something like that, then it leaves flexibility down the road if it needs to be changed, taking kind of that framework charter approach.
Thank you, Member Anderson. I'll jump to City Attorney Niles now.
I just wanted to point out that if we adopt the language regarding a minimum of five, our municipal code also provides the number of board members. So all this would do is mean that city council could change it by ordinance, but nothing would change under the current boards unless and until city council adopted another ordinance changing the number, because we've already established it by ordinance as well and put it in our municipal code.
Thank you, City Attorney Niles. Member Noon Camp.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the presentation and all the good work here. I've got a couple of questions. One is on the redistricting, just so that I'm clear. Is there a possibility, I understand that we're working off of, I think you said 1979 case law, the 9.9%, but is there a possibility where we could change our charter, you know, this fall, and then there could be new, a new case law or new, something new from the federal government that would change the number, and we would have to change this again? Is that a possibility?
It's possible, although this is a pretty solid body of law. We're looking at cases that are 30, 40 years old that haven't changed a lot, so I don't foresee big shifts.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, to that end, it might make sense to stay away from a specific number and just restate the principle of population uniformity.
Great. And then to some of, you know, just the broad questions about, should we have more kind of broad language on the ballot or show the strike-through? And I don't know if you can answer this question or not, but if we went with the broad language on the ballot, is it possible to include more information in the strike-through in the blue book for voters so that they have it available to them if they want to see the actual changes?
I think that would be a possibility, but I would defer to the city clerk about what the city actually can put in the blue book.
In the blue book? We can probably write a summary for this. They don't usually restrict that at all, so I think that we could do a summary with the explanation.
I think I, do you have more? Sorry. I didn't want to cut you off. Sorry. I thought maybe I cut you off. I'm sorry. I would prefer probably than my, if I'm weighing in here, to have the more general simplified language on the ballot and then include the more specific strike-through and kind of explanation to voters of what we're changing in the blue book, if that's possible.
Thank you, Member Noon Camp. Anyone else want to weigh in on the proposed changes, though specifically three, four? Member Russell.
Thank you. So if we do change, change it to five members the way it is, then from this point forward, city council could change things by ordinance, and it wouldn't have to go back to the citizens' for approval.
It could increase. Yeah, city council could increase membership by ordinance without going back to the citizens.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Potem.
I have some specifics to share. I think I'm with Member Noon and Camp on what goes on the ballot, although some of these, I think, seem to fit specific language changes. For example, number two, election-related items, logistics, and location. I think having the actual change written out there may be helpful to the voters, and it's a very simple thing we're doing, so putting it in those simple terms, I think, is useful. On the redistricting question, I would support a more generic, sort of as little as possible type terminology, as opposed to putting a fixed percentage, given the risk that that percentage could change either by the passage of some new federal law or state law or other means. On the subject of council terms, again, I would use the specific language showing exactly what we're changing. The council meeting location, I think either one is fine. On that one, manager's powers and duties, no objection. The board and commission membership, I do want to weigh in on this one and just say that the number five is fine by me for all of them, although I would ask those questions individually. That's just my personal preference, understanding that there is case law that establishes that it's a single subject, whether we ask it as a package or individually. I strongly feel that there are some voters who may feel differently about the library board than they do about the Board of Adjustment and Appeals, for instance, and therefore, I believe those questions should be asked individually. And I have no objections to the Government Immunity Act portion. I would use the simple question for that.
Thank you, Mayor Potem. Just a clarification on number five. Did you want the strike-through? Is that what I understood correctly? The council meeting location?
I have no preference on that. I could go either way on that one.
Thank you, Mayor Potem. Anyone else want to weigh in? Member Anderson?
Oh, we'll weigh in on the strike-throughs. I generally prefer those, so some, I mean, somebody hasn't done that to pull out the book to look it up. I get, unless it makes it extensively, you know, or unwieldy in terms of the length. Most of these where you have the strike-through option aren't really much, much longer, so in general, I would prefer the strike-through ones.
Any other concerns on any of the other items?
No, no concerns on any of the others.
And I'm sorry, did you weigh in on the board and commission membership, Member Anderson? Since I have you?
I, I didn't. I'm, I hear Member Ward's concern there, but I would be fine asking it as one, I think we're just multiplying questions. I don't know if we get to a place where we have to add a new page. I mean, we're talking four or five questions there. I guess they'd be fairly short, but I kind of prefer to keep it as one, but I could go either way, really.
Thank you, Member Anderson. Anyone else want to weigh in? Member Noon and Camp?
I'm also fine with the five, and I'm also fine asking it in one question. Don't have a strong opinion on if it's that, and agree with Member Anderson, just that we could face some voter fatigue. There's a lot happening here. And as far as the strike-through, I want whatever is easiest for the voters to understand and whatever is the clearest. And I think there might be an argument to be made for being consistent, not kind of changing it by question. I wonder if that makes it more complicated, and so I think picking one maybe would make the most sense.
Thank you, Member Noon and Camp. I'll weigh in as well. The way that I'm looking at this is in terms of just, how do we keep it as simple as possible for the, for voters to understand? So I would be in favor of not having the strike-throughs, just because I find it sometimes hard to read in trying to find my place in this, so I would prefer, even though it's not many changes on many of these, I still would prefer the broader term. On number seven, I would just like one question for the boards and commissions and to keep it as five. The redistricts, redistrict, redistrict, I can't even speak now. Redistricting question. I would be okay with the broader statement, but I also understand possibly just removing the percentage as well, kind of to Mayor Potem's point, so. But I would want the broader question without the strike-throughs, and I'd be fine removing the percentage. Anyone else want to weigh in? Member Noon and Camp?
I forgot to mention this. I'm also, would prefer to remove the percentage, just to not have to come back here in case.
Does anyone, we don't have consensus yet in terms of some of these ballot questions, but does anybody, I think some of us here, I could run through what we have right now for the, for number three, for redistricting. It sounds like we have three members of council that are for the broader question and potentially removing the percentage. For number four, did you want to weigh in, Member Anderson?
I was just going to weigh in on the percent. I'm happy with removing that as well. I think that gets us to four there, right?
Correct.
And I, I would be also.
Okay. Does anybody in disagreement with anything I've stated so far tonight, or at least members of council, in the majority? Board and commissions, that's the only one that I kind of had a little bit of concern with, but I'm fine with keeping it as one question and five members and leaving it to ordinance. Any other concerns? I don't see any. So Madam Attorney, Graham, any confusion there in terms of what we are stating?
No, I think, so I think next step is to prepare this in ordinance form for consideration and formal vote in June. Is that right?
Two weeks, yeah.
It's already June, the next time, the next time in June. So we'll do that. And I will kind of use this guidance and try to make questions that meet as many people's preferences as possible. See what happens.
Sounds great. Madam Attorney Graham, thank you very much for the presentation tonight. Up next is Finance Manager Kevin Ingles and Jim Hinkel from the city's financial auditing firm, Hinkel &amp; Company, here to discuss the 2021 audited annual report and audit results. Good evening, Mr. Ingles.
Evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Kevin Ingles, Finance Manager for the city. Also with us tonight is Jim Hinkel, Managing Partner of our audit firm, of Hinkel &amp; Company. We're here to discuss the audit of our 2021 annual financial report. Mr. Hinkel is going to go through some of the audit process with you and also the results, and then we'll see what kind of questions you have for us.
Good evening. My name is Jim Hinkel with Hinkel &amp; Company CPAs, and we perform the annual audit of the financial statements as published by Mr. Ingles and the Finance Department. The annual report is now kind of referred to as an ACFR, as opposed to what we used to call it. Just kind of moved around the names to be a little bit more politically correct, I suppose. The audit took place by starting off with our, updating our understanding of the city's internal accounting controls, and then we test those controls to ensure that they are operating as designed and that they can be relied upon. That allows us basically two things. The first thing is to determine whether or not the city's accounting department has any significant deficiencies or material weaknesses in the internal controls. Now, those are terms of art for us. A significant deficiency is a design flaw that will allow an error to go undetected in the ordinary course of business, and a material weakness is a significant deficiency that would result in a material misstatement to the financial statements. And based upon our review of the internal control structure and our testing, we did not find any significant deficiencies or material weaknesses in internal controls, and that's the answer that you all really want to hear. That allows us also, then, to design our tests over the financial statements. Most of those are tested details, where we drill down into account balances and look up the transactions that make up those account balances, and then we compare those amounts to source documents such as invoices, deposit evidence on revenues and receivables. We also look at analytic review, where we compare numbers this year to last year, this year to budget, balance sheets to income statement items, and we're looking for relationships that we either didn't expect or couldn't explain, and if we find any of those, we do more test of details until we have the audit evidence necessary to express an opinion. And the opinion this year is the same as last year. It is an unmodified opinion, or in layman's term, that is a clean opinion. Now, for those that want to go through the actual document and look at it, the audit report has changed from last year. About every 15, 20 years, the AICPA decides that they need to redo the audit opinion, and this is the year for it. It is still an unmodified, clean opinion. It just now is longer and looks different. It is still an unmodified, clean opinion, it just now is longer and looks different. The opinion paragraph is at the very beginning instead of the end, but it is an unmodified opinion. Uh, we have also performed a, a single audit, and that is where the city has federal expenditure, ward expenditures in excess of $750,000, and we're required to test compliance with the major programs as it's defined in the federal regulations, which is the highway money in your case. Uh, we do issue two reports with respect to that. It, it is not in this CAFER or ACFER document, it's in a separate document. Uh, but basically, both reports are unmodified, clean opinions, states that the city does have the internal control structure to know what federal programs it participates in and what those compliance requirements are, and that we did not find any instances of non-compliance, both overall with respect to any federal program and also as well as with the major programs, the highway program that we tested in particular. So all three of those opinions are clean opinions, uh, and that is also what you want to hear. Finally, we issue a required communication letter where, uh, we are required to communicate various items to you all, those charged with governance, uh, and that is that we did not have any disagreements with management, we did not have any difficulties during the audit process, and we did not make any adjustments to the books and records, nor did we find any areas that needed adjustments that we decided not to adjust because it was not material enough. So we did not have any adjustments or past adjustments with respect to the audit, uh, process. Probably the last thing that's important to you all, in my opinion, is that during the audit, we felt like we had an open transparency. Everything that we asked for, we were provided in a reasonable timeframe. We were never denied any information or source documents. So we felt like we were able to ask for and receive whatever information we felt necessary for us to fulfill our professional standards. So, uh, all in all, that's kind of the process of the audit, and the findings are good, and we don't have any negative items to report at all. Any questions so far on the audit?
Thank you, Mr. Hinkle. Just not a fan of the fact that we're not calling it a CAFER anymore, so it just rolls off the tongue a little bit easier. Uh, Mayor Protem?
I just have one question in regards to the content of the audit report itself, and this may be better directed to our finance staff, but, uh, this is the first year I've actually noticed a net loss being reported on investment income, and that's a bit concerning to me. So, uh, the question is, uh, this may be relative to the way we're reporting, I want to make sure I have a full grasp on what we're seeing on that last line. Is that inclusive of unrealized losses, or is this actually a quarter million dollars that we've lost in our investments?
No, it's required to that we include unrealized losses and gains in that number.
Okay, so, uh, that's just essentially the total portfolio value, but likely to be not a realized loss.
It, it's a point in time measurement.
Okay. And that was as of December 31st. That's the point in time that's being measured. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from council? No, I think we have one of these.
I might add one thing on that, that, that's the, some of the C-Safe, uh, Color Trust funds, and we as auditors, uh, are seeing that across the board at numerous different cities and towns. Anybody that had money with the state in those funds are seeing that exact same thing.
Thank you, that's helpful, too.
Thank you, Mr. Hinkle. Uh, Member Russell?
Thank you, and this is just a, a process, um, issue. So how many years have you been doing the audit for us?
Uh, Hinkle and Company has done it four years?
Okay, thank you. And so what is the, um, generally accepted amount of time that we use the same auditing firm?
So our, uh, finance policies say six years unless there's a change in the principal in the auditing firm, and then it can be seven years.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing now, Mr. Ingles, Mr. Hinkle, thank you very much for your time for providing us a overview of the annual report.
Thank you, Council.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Moving on to agenda items C, or session topic C, it's, uh, City Managers Sean Lewis and David Plarity from Magellan. Magellan Strategies will be present to discuss the tax ballot survey results. Good evening, Mr. Plarity.
Uh, good evening, uh, Mayor and Council. Uh, thanks for having me tonight. I'm gonna be brief, I'm on a tight deadline per the instructions of your city managers, I am timing now. Um, the presentation, sorry, are we gonna? Oh, sorry.
Mr. Plarity, we have it within the packet itself, I know, maybe an issue for members online, but we do have the, do you happen to have it?
I do on my laptop, I'm sorry, I thought it would've been loaded just so that I could walk you through, but it's a little bit easier to understand.
Yeah, just give us one second here, Mr. Plarity.
Thanks, Sean. Um, I had the copy finalized, um, but it's, I didn't, was I gonna plug it in or anything? It's on my laptop, sorry. That's not gonna, okay, alright, there you go. Sorry about that. So just go from there, reference slide numbers, okay?
Mayor, uh, Council, apologies for that, I think I probably failed to drop that in the folder, but we'll try to get that up on the screen as he's going through this.
Alright, sounds good.
Thanks. Okay, um, tonight we're gonna report on a survey of eight hundred and eighty-seven registered voters in the city of Englewood, Colorado. The vast majority of these voters are likely to vote in the 2022 election, uh, and the top-line responses to these survey questions had a margin of error of plus or minus 3.2%, which is a very low margin of error. This is a very large, robust sample size, so feel good about that. There's a big difference between interview 300 voters and 800 voters. Um, and the survey results were weighted to be representative of what past midterm elections had been in the city of Englewood, so that would be 2018 and 2014, although we think it'll be closer to 2018. Uh, but just, uh, going through that, um, generally, starting off with, uh, measuring support and opposition levels for different funding revenue streams for addressing your roads. Um, what we always like to do first and foremost is ask, you know, uh, how, you know, would you support or oppose a dedicated tax increase to fund city street and road maintenance and repairs? The reason we ask that question first without getting into the specifics is, we just really want to know, are voters there enough where they would even consider a tax before we get into the details? Uh, and overall, 61% did support, uh, the general idea of that tax. Then we got into the details, um, and this is really for the city to either maintain their current OCI level of, uh, a street rating of 59, not to get too much into the details there, um, or trying to achieve a 70 OCI. And again, just, uh, in general understanding, uh, these are, uh, an overall measurement of how good the roads are. Um, we educated respondents that, uh, currently the city on average allocates about 1.5 million dollars towards roads. However, to maintain, uh, the city's OCI rating at 59, 3.3 million dollars would need to be, of new revenue would need to be generated. From that, we then tested, would you prefer to fund this through a mill levy or fund it through a sales tax increase? Um, and as you walk through that, you know, we can see that when we offered or presented a two-mill property tax increase, and we did include in that question, uh, exactly how much that mill levy would cost a home's value so that respondents can get their head around that a lot. It's really important when you're talking about mills, that the respondent understands what it's gonna cost them, otherwise you're just gonna get an automatic no. It's a courtesy and it, it's just good practice. Um, support levels there were 55% would support and 39% would oppose for a two-mill increase to maintain on, uh, you know, a 59 OCI rating. We then flipped, uh, on that and said, okay, the other option is to fund it through a sales tax increase of .189, um, and told them that's 19 cents on a hundred dollar purchase. Um, not surprisingly, in our line of work, people prefer a sales tax increase where support levels for that same amount goes up to 73%. This is very common, very natural in ballot measures across Colorado. People prefer sales tax increases to mill levy increases, uh, for a number of reasons, um, and your community, uh, reflects really what is really the norm. Um, moving on, we then said, okay, how about getting up to 70, uh, a OCI rating for your roads? Many, uh, communities surrounding Englewood are at that level, we educated and informed people about that, but the cost would be 5.5 million to achieve that level. Um, if you wanted to do that and you wanted to fund it off a 4.5 mill levy increase, uh, that would cost a homeowner 125 dollars a year on a home valued at 400, um, a majority opposed that. Uh, only 52%, or excuse me, only 43% would support, 52% would oppose. Again, then offering up the sales tax option, um, if we did a .414 sales tax increase, which would be 41 dollars on a hundred dollar purchase, uh, would you, uh, support that? Uh, and, uh, at that level, 61% said, yes, I would support that. Uh, so, again, we have two different options, the mill levy does, uh, does not, uh, do as well or is as popular compared to the sales tax option. Um, and then moving on, um, we, uh, did the option where, uh, would raise the OCIs level, uh, within five years, um, based on a bond, where basically you would issue a 45 million dollar bond with a payback term of 10 years, um, and the mill levy to fund the debt service payments on that was 5.8. Uh, again, that would be 164 dollars a year for a homeowner for a home with an assessed value of 400,000 dollars, and that did not go over well. Uh, you had 58% people saying that they would oppose that and only 35%. Moving on from there, we then said, okay, how about funding the debt service on that 45 million dollar bond with a 10-year term where we did a sales tax increase of .54? Um, that barely got to the majority at 52%. Uh, you know, so again, you could take away from this, just the bond concept and idea is less popular perhaps than the other two priors, when you're addressing your streets and roads, whether you want to, uh, go to, uh, maintain at 59, um, at 3.3 million versus trying to knock it up to 70. So, um, neither of those went over well. Okay, I'm at six minutes, gonna keep moving along. Um, and so if you just look at slide 17, um, we rank for you the options just within that, uh, I hope you find that helpful. Um, and as you can see, um, what is likely to have, uh, voter approval this November, and again, we are in an inflationary environment, I'm sure you're fully aware of that, however, voters understand that, and the problem that they're trying to fund and address, they do really want. We had a, a question in here prior to this saying, uh, how would you rate your streets and roads? And you have an above-average, uh, concern for people saying that they, they could be improved. So with that said, uh, slide 17 really lays out what I just laid out to you as what we measured that would have the stronger support, which would be a .189 sales tax increase to maintain it at 59 OCI, uh, road rating. Uh, the next level down would be the .414 sales tax increase to try to achieve 70. Okay, moving on from there, your next funding need, uh, personnel for police. Um, again, we asked a question, do you support or oppose a tax increase to fund additional police officers and staff for the, uh, police department? Again, undefined, we just want to know, hey, um, is this a much of a need where you would actually consider a tax before I get into the details? A majority did say yes at 56%. Then in the same sort of construct and, and approach, uh, we then said, uh, explain to them, uh, the Englewood Police Department has requested hiring six patrol officers, two desk officers for support writing, and one dispatch supervisor. Um, it's important to put those details in, by the way, the more that the respondent and the voter knows, uh, the more, uh, likely they are at least to appreciate and understand that. Cost is 1.2 million, and again, we went through the same exercise, if you want to pay for this with the property tax increase, you're looking at 1.335 mils. This is gonna cost you 37 dollars a year on a home valued at 400,000. And that came back with barely 51% majority, so if you refer this to the ballot, it, it, you know, it would be a coin flip, if not perhaps likely fail, just saying, um, with the inflationary environment out there. Um, but again, how about a .12% sales tax increase to fund that? That's 12 cents on a hundred dollar purchase, and again, we educated in that, um, you know, how the taxing, uh, how the overall tax rate would increase. Um, supports at 60% for that. Again, much more palatable, smaller tax amount, just, you know, I would get there, uh, at 60%, uh, likely would happen, um, comparing those two different revenue options. Okay, then, um, a third option that we went forward with is we explained to respondents that, uh, the city's commitment, uh, recently, um, or in the last few years to alternative policing and justice, um, has, uh, basically, uh, created a funding need, uh, more than you've ever had in the past. And again, we were very descriptive as saying, um, the city's commitment to alternative policing and justice programs such as social work and health clinicians that assist police, restorative justice programs to rehabilitate youth, and call diversion programs to connect people in crisis to crisis, resources have been added to the police and municipal court budgets. We wanted respondents and voters to know, like, hey, we've got a lot of new personnel to address, uh, you know, some really new, uh, public safety needs and concerns. Um, and this has diverted resources from other priorities, et cetera, et cetera. Therefore, the city's concerning a ballot measure to create an annual 1.8 million dedicated funding source for correspondents, the restorative justice program, et cetera, just so that voters understand, we need 1.8 million, these are the folks, and this is how it would be spent. Um, and then, uh, laid out that, okay, starting off at the mill exercise, a two-mill increase would get the job done, it would cost a homeowner 56 dollars a year on a home valued at 400,000 dollars. Uh, mid-majority, 55% said that they would support that, 39% would oppose. Using the same exercise, uh, another option, uh, would be a .18% sales tax increase, uh, again, 18 cents on a, a purchase and so forth, and as you can see, support, you get about seven more points of support on that because it isn't a property tax increase, so you're at the low 60s at 62%. Um, and if you compare those two, as you can see, uh, just compared to our road funding options, the strongest or most, uh, likely one that would have the most support, it's a close call, um, where you would go the sales tax option of .18 for the alternative police and justice versus, uh, to hire the additional police officers and, uh, police personnel at .12 is also at 60%. Um, where the other two options on the mill levy, uh, you're, you're, you may not get there, um, small majorities would support that. Um, and then finally, um, we asked a question, uh, sometimes we can ask, you know, do you want all three, do you not want any of the three? And the best way, when you have, when we're testing this many potential ballot measures, which one would you have the opportunity to vote on? It's a little bit more straightforward, and it's also a measurement of, hey, this is what I would really like to see. And in all honesty, among those three options, uh, it was not much difference, um, it was nearly a third, a third, a third. Uh, road and maintenance repair was the first choice, we asked to rank, uh, and then it was additional police officers, and then it was alternative policing and justice personnel. Now, bringing all of this way through, if you add up which was the first choice, your second choice, and your third choice, it literally comes in at like 199 and 98, so it's very, very close, okay? And within the margin of error, remember, the survey has a margin of error of three and a half points, so it's, it's kind of a close call there, um, on where that would be. So with that, I'm at 12 minutes, and I am happy to take questions.
Now, it's pretty impressive, Mr. Plarity, uh, to get through all those slides and summarization. Anyone want to kick us off with questions? Member Noonan Camp?
Thank you for the presentation, I appreciate it. I am curious, looking at these numbers, you know, there's sometimes an adage that says you have to start at 60%, right? Uh, if, if something's going to pass. Um, and we see some different numbers here, I'm curious your thoughts on, uh, in a municipal measure like this, uh, do you, do you see these numbers holding through the election, or what do these actually tell us, right, about?
Excellent, uh, question, uh, Councilmember. Um, yes, honestly, they do. Unless there's a vigorous no campaign out there, this is not like a statewide ballot measure where a lot of the norm is for folks that perhaps are familiar, follow statewide ballot measures. It must start at 65% because it's gonna claw and fall behind, and that's the only way it's gonna stay above 50%. That's for, I think, uh, statewide ballot measures that really are more, uh, there was a well-funded yes and no campaign. But in our 15 years of doing local ballot measures such as this, uh, like, for example, in 2021, we had 11 ballot measures that we worked on, and of those, we said 10 were passed and, and one was going to fail, and none of them that we projected fell below necessarily what we, uh, projected. Uh, it's a straight-up measurement, as long as the ballot measure language mimics exactly what we measured in the survey, that's what they're gonna know and read. And, you know, for the blue book, most folks will understand by reading it, this is pretty straightforward, it's funding for roads, and the more detail you have in the ballot measure is always good practice, uh, just so that the city and your residents all know exactly where this money is going. A lot of times we'll see with a very poorly-written ballot language after something we may have measured, and, you know, we try to avoid that as much as possible, voters would be like, you know what, this is just one big ball of money going to just Department X, and that, that's why, it, I, I, it is, we, we, I, it, it is a weird niche knowledge that we have here from doing these things, and this is just sort of a best practice. But that's why in the, in the survey, we really tried to be as descriptive as possible on the police description. You know, the OCI rating versus a 70 versus a 59, you can't really get nutty, you know what I mean, with different kinds of roads, people's heads are really starting spinning over that. But, uh, just to answer your question, typically, they will hold their support levels believing where they are, and the real importance of the survey being accurate is us making sure that our, uh, demographics are accurately forecasted, such- are accurately forecasted, such as Republicans will make up 20% of the vote, Democrats will make up roughly 40, and the unaffiliateds will make up about 39. If that changes radically, and rarely does it do that, unless it's like a Barack Obama-style election where you have, same thing for age, where voters that are 18 to 34-year-olds, typically, they may only make up 15% of the vote in a midterm election, but when you have Barack Obama on the election, it jumps up twice. But we really make sure that we try to forecast that, because a lot of things still could drive turnout in this midterm election, such as Supreme Court rulings around, you know, Roe v. Wade, et cetera. And it's just a fact of how the environment could change, so I'll be quite there.
That's helpful, thank you. My second question is just, can you give us a sense, in your experience, if there are multiple questions like this on the ballot, how does that affect voter behavior?
They can cancel each other out, unfortunately. You know, I know you have multiple funding needs that perhaps your voters would like to weigh in on, but if there's a serious competing amount, but I feel like from your survey, roads and perhaps one of the other ones in keeping within the sales tax perhaps would be the smartest thing to do, you'll be all right. But when the burden is heavy, like for example, City of Castle Pines, part of their community wanted a new rec center, eight-mil increase, $300 a year. They also have a serious road funding problem, that was also, you know, on the ballot, and we put those two things on the ballot. That is just too much to ask your voters, especially, and they're also going the property tax route. They ended up, only even though they put on one, that one did not pass well, because a lot of the recreation center people were upset that they didn't have an opportunity even to vote on it. So I think you're okay here with going two. Three, I think, could be pushing a little bit in this inflationary environment, but I'll let staff and city managers speak to that.
Thank you.
Mayor Protem.
I was actually a little surprised by the response to the bond concept. In your experience, is that unique or similar to other nearby municipalities?
Honestly, Councilman, I'm not, I mean, what did you think the support levels were going to be at on the bond? Typically, bonds are very common, and for what you want to do, like, hey, we want to bond on this to address all of our needs. I think the property tax perhaps wasn't the greatest idea versus the sales tax, but for whatever reason, it appeared that they just preferred more of a straight-up one. So I agree, perhaps it's a little out of the norm of what we may see, but it still got there, though, you know, it's just...
Yeah, I feel like voters generally are more receptive to bonds because the tax period is finite, it ends when the bond is paid off. And that doesn't, that's not reflected by the survey.
Well, here's the other thing to keep in mind, senior citizens, folks who are older on fixed incomes, okay? And guess who owns homes? People that are senior citizens and older people. Guess who doesn't own homes? Younger people. So when you don't get touched and it doesn't touch you, they're a little more tax tolerant because they're not paying it anyways. Seniors, though, on the other hand, are very highly correlated to homeownership. And in this environment, I think that's what it is, is like, well, even though it may not be a lot, and we're seeing that a lot in our good 15 in the field right now, that's probably why, it's the property tax on those seniors, especially with, you know, gas is, you know, staying above $4, everybody's talking about the inflation, where that's why I think you're having pause there, and it's a little get amplified. Thank you.
Any other questions from council? City Manager Lewis, is there anything that you want to chime in here? Because there is a recommendation from staff in terms of what direction for city council seek for this election? Leave it to you to...
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, as you see on the screen, after really reviewing all of the survey data, looking at our 10-year capital plan that you all have, if you look over just the next five years, we have about $116 million in capital fund needs. And so if you look at the fact that we have historically, you know, the last few years been spending, you know, seven to nine million, this year, we're set to spend about 12 because of ARPA dollars, we've got one-time money coming in that we will never be able to plan on in the future. But if you break that down, you know, you're looking at 23 million a year in need over the next five years, and we're simply underfunding capital pretty significantly. So when we look at that, and as well as really the dramatic increases that we've seen totaling about 1.2 million, not including equipment, in the police department with regard to services that address homelessness, you know, our co-responder program, our case managers, we now have a sergeant that's assigned specifically to making sure that homeless services are being humanely delivered, administered, as well as addressing community needs that have been expressed around homelessness. So those costs, you know, we didn't, five years ago, we didn't have that 1.2 million. So when we look at the survey information that was provided, keeping in mind those two points, staff feels like that a .2 sales tax, you remember that .18 fared very well, it was very high, it's 73% support. If we go to .2, that still is in that 65 to 73% support, we feel like. So we feel like that would address, you know, keeping our roads at the level that they're at now with some improvement. It's a little improvement over the 59, it would get us over to the 60 range for that OCI. And then on the police side, taking a .1%, excuse me, that's a one cent, sales tax increase for those alternative policing, you may notice that restorative justice is not in this, and that was really due to the fact that it didn't poll as well, so we thought we would reduce that proposed sales tax rate, go with a .1, but that would cover all of our co-responders, our sergeant that's assigned to this, as well as our case manager that's assigned to this, and, you know, provide additional, a dedicated funding source for those needs. So the recommendation there on the screen is .2 for sales tax, for road maintenance, .1 for police services, alternative police services. We're glad to answer any questions.
Thank you, City Manager Lewis, any questions? Member Anderson.
Thank you for the presentation, thank you, City Manager Lewis. How would this, if this would end up being a .3% increase, where would that put us for somebody who went out and bought something in Inglewood? What's the total? And how does that, and maybe you can answer this question off the top of your head, but how does that compare to surrounding communities? The concern I have is that if we go up too much, people will be incentivized to shop elsewhere.
Great question, Member Anderson. So if you look at our property tax in comparison to some of our community, you may remember from the chart that we saw, and you don't have this in your slides, but from the last presentation that we did on this, we were right in the middle. So we were, you know, Lakewood, Greenwood Village, they're below us, Inglewood is right above them at 3.5, and we have the same rate as Wheat Ridge, Cherry Hills Village, and Sheridan. When you go to Littleton, theirs is now at 3.75, and as is Thornton and Aurora, Boulder is at 3.86, and Denver is at 4.81. What's interesting to note about Inglewood is that we have the lowest property tax mill rate in the region. And so when you look at cities, we actually are quite similar to Denver in this, that Denver and Inglewood have pretty low property mill levies, but we have, in contrast to Denver, they have a very high sales tax and we do not, we're very middle of the road. So if you look at kind of that combined tax burden on your residents, for, you know, people that own property in the city, certainly, commercial pays a bigger percentage than residential, but our property taxpayers are really getting a good deal, a very good investment, return on their investment for property tax, but we're getting less revenue in terms of sales tax. So to really make us equivalent in terms of total tax burden in Inglewood, we feel like going to that 3.75, 3.8% while putting us, you know, at the top of that list, still is pretty equitable when you look at the total tax burden.
Thank you.
Member Russell.
Thank you. And so how will the DDA be impacted by this? Will they end up getting part of this because it is in the downtown area?
Thank you for the question, Member Russell. It's my understanding that the base, the TIF is of course, tax increment financing is based on the base that's being collected. If we put an additional tax that was outside the base, we get, the city would get that increment, it would not go to the DDA. But we will verify that, and I posed that question to the attorney just now, and we'll look that up, and if that's incorrect, we'll correct that at the end of the meeting.
Okay, and then also, are we needing to do this because of the tax increment financing is going to be taking some of our expected overreach that we used to have?
Again, good question. The, what we're seeing right now with our sales and property tax increment districts that we've activated, is that, you know, we're still getting a portion of that increase, not all of the money that the, by creating the tax increment financing districts, zones, rather, is diverting all of that money to the DDA, but certainly some of it is. In the financial analysis that, you know, I've looked at, that finance has put together, we would still be underfunding capital. I mean, when you look at the total need for capital of an average of 23 million over the next five years, per year for the next five years, we're underfunding capital by more than 50%. So even if we had the DDA increase that was included in that, we would still be far below what we need to be spending on capital.
Thank you.
Any other questions from council? Mayor Protem.
Circling back to the staff recommendation, I'm curious, when I look at the poll results, regarding public safety, the .18% sales tax increase actually pulled higher than the .12% sales tax increase, and yet the staff recommendation is lower than either one of those. It's at .10. We received a briefing from the police department, they told us what we needed, we gathered the amount of money that that would cost us, and my understanding is that was the basis of this poll. Why would we not fund what the police department told us they would need in order to meet the needs of the community?
I guess I'm looking at slide, I believe it's slide 23, the .12 to fund, sales tax to fund nine public safety professionals is at 60%. When you look at the same question with a slightly different rate, but it's just what it costs, to fund .18 sales tax, to fund the alternate policing, it pulls at 62%. So that's the reason that we, this recommendation is, because it polls better to fund alternate policing, as well as looking at the, you got the narrative, the open-ended question information, and it appears that a large percentage of our community is very interested in how we are dealing with the issue of homelessness in our community, both from a service delivery perspective, as well as a community impact perspective. So I think that's the basis for that recommendation.
But .10 is lower than .12 or .18. So your overall staff recommendation is lower than either one of those baselines, and the one that polled better is actually higher at .18. And that's the part that I don't understand.
Well, frankly, we were just trying to stay below the top of the pack in terms of cumulative sales tax impact. So you could certainly shift, we would not recommend going three cents, excuse me, we would not recommend to go above 3.8%. And if we did, you know, the .2 for streets and .2, then we'd be, you know, looking at a .9, 3.9 sales tax, and we think that that's untenable.
Okay, that answers the question. The goal was to keep the overall tax rate low, and roads were prioritized above public safety in order to achieve that goal.
Correct, based on the survey.
Thank you.
Any other questions from council? And I guess in terms of just the staff recommendation set forth by staff, any comments in favor, not in favor? Anything to add? I know this is a tough one. Actually, I'll ask a question before, while everybody noodles on that, but I guess in terms of just the accounting aspect of it, if these two were to pass, it does sound like we are, what's the word, we're basically that the funds are going to be for that specific item. Obviously, staff has a mechanism to make sure that those funds are going to be used for those two purposes if they were brought to pass.
Correct.
You're marked, that's the word.
Yes.
Okay.
And Mayor, I should mention that we did add and direction, this is information and direction, because similar to the Charter Amendment, we do need to move with some haste with regard to finalizing a question to potentially put on the ballot. If there's no interest in either of these, then we would like that direction as well.
Thank you, City Manager. I'll get us started on this one. I came into the night thinking that I was going to just vote for one over the other, just because I thought if asking two questions make, as you stated, counsel each other out. Based on what I heard tonight, it sounds like that may be less of a concern with if we move forward with the sales tax version. So I'll go based off the recommendation of council of .20 or .10. I wouldn't, you could easily just steer me off of that in terms of just moving forward with just a .20 for road and maintenance, just because I am concerned that if we put two questions on the ballot, that people are going to start wondering why we're asking for so much. So that's the concern I have. You mentioned the inflationary environment that we're in now, that many people are feeling the effects of this. So I can understand that as well as the, as a reason to just back off of one or both, but in terms of tonight, I will recommend going with both. Anyone else? Member Anderson, sorry.
Thank you, Mayor. The, I feel like .3 with the way our economy is going, .3 seems a little too high for me to, I'm not sure we would get that, and I don't like what that, on a sales tax basis, that tends to hit poor people harder. So I would prefer to keep it to .25 cents. I'm wondering, is there a way to, maybe it'd be too complicated, but to load these into one question with like a .25, or is that not possible, or?
Thank you for the question. We did have that question from council members offline, and the city attorney did look into that, and this would not, doing so, combining those questions would not violate the single-issue regulations.
Okay, well, I would, if we could, if we could word that out, I would prefer one question and to keep it to .25 cents. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Anderson. Member Woodward.
I would support it as it's written. I don't know if, as I understand this, this is 30 cents on $100, correct? So I don't know if that's going to really scare somebody away. So I'm supportive.
Thank you, Member Woodward. I'm doing the math in my head, is that correct? 30 cents on $100, is that right? It is? City Manager, all right, thank you. Mayor Protem.
I'd like to keep the questions separate, because I believe that we need to ask our voters what they value and what they're willing to pay for it. If we merge those questions together, we're not, in my opinion, asking the right question. We may have one block of voters that supports improvements to roads and another block of voters that supports improvements to public safety. And merging them together, to me, seems like we are trying to manipulate the vote, which is not something I want to do. I want to ask my voters the question, do you value this and are you willing to pay for it, this much money? And that's very important to me, so I would keep them separate. Secondly, regardless of where it places Inglewood on the sales tax list, I am uncomfortable asking our police department, what resources do you need to keep our city safe? And then receiving an answer from the police department and going to the voters and saying, we heard what our police department told us they needed in order to keep our city safe, and we're going to give them half of it. I don't like that. I want to inform our people of what our staff says they need in order to maintain operations at a level that the people deem effective, and ask the people if they're willing to pay that. So I would support the poll questions on public safety at the percentages that were noted there, and the poll questions on roads at the percentages that were noted there. That's where I'm at. I don't think I have the council majority on that, but I just think that we would be doing a disservice to our people if we merge the questions, or if we don't fund the police department and we tell them, give us some money, and we'll put it to use in public safety, but not in the amount that they actually told us they need to accomplish the job. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Member Noonan Camp.
Yeah, I'll reiterate what I said when we first considered bringing this up. This is really bad time to have this conversation for a lot of folks, right? People are coming out of the pandemic still, and we are still feeling the effects of that. We're experiencing incredible cost of living, inflation, price at the pump, and I just want to take a moment and acknowledge that, and I think it could be really easy for citizens who are watching this to think that this is a very out-of-touch conversation, and I think we have to acknowledge the environment in which we're asking this question. And I think we have to acknowledge the environment in which we're asking this question. But because we live in Colorado and we live under Tabor, the voters ultimately will get to decide if this is something that they want to invest in. They get to decide if they want roads or if they want alternative policing funding. And so for that reason, I do support putting both questions on the ballot. I was also leaning toward one. But I also don't want to get into kind of the gamesmanship of having to pick for the voters. The voters will get to decide. I would prefer to keep them two separate questions for that reason as well. I do support keeping them at the numbers that they are currently. I hear what the mayor Protem is saying, but I'm concerned, as we've heard from our staff, that there could be negative impacts to our local economy if we raise the sales tax higher than 3.8. And I would never want to divert business outside of the city. And so I want us to kind of be really careful and ginger with how we're approaching this. If we were to pick one question over the other, the challenge is that we are trying to decide which one of these needs is more important to our community, and they are both incredibly important. We don't have what we need for either of them. And I think that the citizens are the ones to make the decision on if we can do both. And as far as funding our police force, it's a huge priority. And it's something, if you recall, that we did, we responded immediately with a supplemental to say, let's get some help into the police force immediately. I think we can continue to have that conversation through this. We can have it through our budget process that we're starting. And would love to see the open positions that we have already funded in the police force filled. They have openings that they have cash for that's been really hard to hire for. So I'd like to support them in that way currently. I think this is a good compromise.
Thank you, member Noonan Camp. Member Anderson?
Thank you, mayor. And I want to respond a little bit to Mayor Protem's concerns, because I think they're valid. And I want to, but I want to pose the question a little bit differently, because I have a different set of concerns. The set of concerns is if we increase these to .18 and left the other one at .2 or whatever, and they both passed, because voters are, we have a higher percentage of homeowners who tend to be voters. I'm afraid we could raise taxes significantly on the sales tax, and that would hurt the poorest people the most. And so just because we have it on there, would I be more concerned about it that they would both pass and we would really hit people hard at the lower income levels? Because they're, some of them are less likely to vote, they don't own homes as much. We already see we have homeowner representation in here, especially in terms of the mill levy tax. And that's why I'm happy to split it into two. I think that's a good argument. But if the max number goes up rather than going down, I just don't like what that does to even a minority of the voters if they're lower income. So that's why I want to keep that overall percentage a little lower than it is.
Thank you, member Anderson. Mayor Protem?
I understand councilmember Anderson's argument, but I'll just point out that I don't really think it holds water. If you look at the lowest income, let's say the lowest income is $30,000 a year. Their largest expense is probably rent. They don't pay sales tax on their rent. So $1,000 a month rent, let's say $12,000. So then they have $18,000 left to spend on that. And we're talking about a tax of 30 cents or 40 cents per $100. If you do the math on that, it doesn't pose a significant risk to those people. It is, I'm just doing napkin math here, but $10, $20, $30, even $100 total for all of their spending over an entire year. So I understand the argument being made. I just don't agree with it logically.
Member Anderson?
The lowest-income voters don't pay rent. All their money is spent on things that require sales tax.
Thank you, member Anderson. Member Russell?
I just want to address one of the points that Mayor Protem made, and I don't agree with it. If the people don't support, a tax increase doesn't mean they don't value safety in this city. I would just like to remind you that in 2016, the voters passed a $32 million bond issue to build a state-of-the-art building for our police department. They have, they bought the police department a Lenco Bearcat armored vehicle. They've paid 1.8 million since 2018 to continue funding. The voters in this city have supported the police to a great degree, even in the last five years. And I think that they have a right to expect safety, whether they vote to approve this or not. There could be a priority that's different than just giving them more money. And we may need to look at that. So that's all I have to share. Thank you.
Thank you, member Russell. Member Woodward?
Yeah, just to expand more on what member Russell said, I think during that same vote for the police department building, five elementary schools were voted to be rebuilt at that time. And I remember watching that on the election night. I just couldn't believe it. I mean, it was just like, oh my goodness, this is incredible. And I think that has to do with a lot of the younger people that have bought homes and have moved into the city and are now invested in the city. And I don't think that we will find that this increase, I mean, if they, if they were to vote one down, I'm guessing it's going to be the policing one based upon the survey. However, I don't think either one of them will be voted down for that amount of cost, because I don't think most people will leave the city to save whatever they're going to save, they're going to spend in gas. So I still like the idea of going with the two and taking the staff recommendation.
Thank you, member Woodward. Member Wink, do you have anything to add on the topic?
I'm not sure it'll really push the discussion in one way or the other. I tend to really support what I've been hearing Mayor Protem state on this topic, kind of wholeheartedly. I would like us to honor the information we've gotten from the police department and not just sort of disregard this information. And I understand, I mean, we've all made really valid points. Yeah, I don't think I have very much other than probably what the mayor Protem has shared.
Thank you, member Wink. Actually, city manager Lewis, I'm sorry to come back to this just because I was, since we kind of started going around robbing on what to support. But I did have a question on, when we were asking these questions about OCI, we were mostly asking about roads. If, I saw a lot of the responses did have alleys as part of their response. Were they under the impression that, and maybe I'm under the misunderstanding of what the dollars would go towards if we were to pass this, but my understanding is it would be just strictly roads and not necessarily alleys?
That's correct. We did decide to put only streets and roads. So no alleys on that.
Was the question explicit in stating that it was just going to be roads?
It was.
Okay. Mayor Protem?
I just did some calculations, and I hope someone smarter than me will check my math. But according to Excel, .2% of $30,000 is $60. .2% of $50,000 is $100. .4% of $30,000 is $120. And .4% of $50,000 is $200. So going back to that poor person, if they spend 100% of their income and it's $30,000 a year that they make, they're going to be taking $120 and putting that in the city coffers of that $30,000 at .4%.
Mayor, could I add to that?
Sure, city manager Lewis.
Just for the public that doesn't work in sales tax rates every day, what we're talking about on the, for instance, the .2 sales tax for street and road maintenance, that is one-fifth of a penny. And when we talk about the .10, the .1 sales tax for alternate policing, we're talking about one-tenth of a penny. And that's again, on the $100. So we would go from a sales tax rate of 3.5 to 3.8 if both of the voters approve both of those. And again, it's one-fifth of a penny and one-tenth of a penny.
Thank you, city manager Lewis. I'll go back around. I just don't think that we have a majority in terms of where we stand as a council. I see, it does look like we do have majority in terms of just keeping the questions split. There seems to be a disagreement on whether or not the split should be what was presented within the material, or if we should go by staff recommendation. I see three in favor of the split. Excuse me, actually, yeah, I have three in favor of the split of the staff recommendation, being myself, member Woodward, and member Noonan Camp. Member Ward is in favor of the split, but at the dollars stated within the presentation, member Anderson was in favor of a 25 cents within one question, or .25 within one question. Member Russell, I don't think you've weighed in on. Member Wink, is there anything that you want to weigh in there? So right now, we have three members of council that are in favor for the split based off staff recommendation. I know this could be part of the ballot question. Do you need four members tonight to agree to what we're asking? I think it probably would make sense if we're going to be asking it as part of a ballot question.
I think with the feedback that we've been provided, we could bring that back in with two or three options in the ordinance, similar to what was described here.
I would be okay with that, just concerned about what that may lead to in two weeks. But I would, yeah, I'm in favor of that if no one else wants to chime in on where they stand. Obviously, we have another discussion about this in a couple of weeks, so. If no further questions for staff, I think we can move on to the next agenda item. Good conversation. Moving on to study session topic D, we have Parks and Rec Director Christina Underhill and Events Supervisor Tony Arnaldi to discuss the Fourth of July event. Good evening, Director.
Good evening, mayor and council. I'm Christina Underhill. I'm the director for Parks, Recreation, Library, Golf, and Events. So tonight, we'd like to provide some information and receive direction regarding the Fourth of July event. Currently, the Fourth of July event is scheduled for Monday, July 4th, at Bellevue and Cornerstone Parks. The planning committee, which consists of Arapahoe County and the cities of Sheridan, Littleton, and Inglewood, as well as South Suburban, are involved in planning this event. And the event partners recently voiced concerns of hosting the event with fireworks due to drought conditions. With those expressed concerns, Tony, our event coordinator, supervisor, has been planning a secondary event that would occur on Monday, July 4th, from 1:00 to 6:00 p.m. It would not include fireworks, but would include vendors, like food vendors, games, music, and various activities. So with that, and that's, again, no fireworks at that one, and we're discussing whether we're going to have an alternative event or actually the fireworks. So I have Fire Marshal Mike Smith here to discuss the drought conditions and answer any questions that you may have.
Good evening, mayor and council. Thank you for your time. So I just wanted to kind of explain fire bans and how they all work and what stage we're in. Currently, April 22nd, 2022, we went into a stage-two fire ban. What a stage-two fire ban means is you can't have any professional fireworks, no open burning at all. And/or firefighters can't even do live burn training during a stage-two. This past Thursday, I issued a stage-one. We went back down to a stage-one, and that was after having a meeting with Arapahoe County Emergency Manager. Stage-one, you can now have professional fireworks. The problem is, I have done my due diligence and called West Metro, the Fire Marshal down at West Metro, Castle Rock, Douglas County Sheriff, Jeffco Sheriff, they all agreed that if it goes to a stage-two, there's no professional fireworks. Based on the Fire Marshals Association and the Colorado State Chiefs Association, we're predicting that we're going to be back into a stage-two before the end of the month. Based on what's happened in December, in December, we had three pretty large fires from fireworks down in Highland Ranch. South Metro highly recommended not doing fireworks. Castle Rock had a big field fire from fireworks in December as well. Just this year alone, December 30th, 2021, the Marshall Fire happened. And then so far this year, we've had multiple red flag days. We've had the driest April that we've ever, one of the driest Aprils we've ever had. So they're predicting high winds, high temperatures again. They're predicting this year to be drought conditions like 2012, which we had a huge wildland season back then. And then we've also had wildfires already this year up in Boulder County, Wald County. We've had spot fires, field fires down in Highland Ranch area, you know, South Metro's district. So my recommendation as a fire marshal, even though we're in a stage-one, we don't move forward with fireworks this year based on the drought conditions and based on the probability we're going to go back to a stage-two come the end of the month. But that's just a prediction. So, thank you, council. I'm sure there's going to be questions.
Thank you, Fire Marshal Smith. Any questions, member Russell?
Thank you. So did you check with Denver? What is Denver doing?
Denver, right now, they do have, they're going to do fireworks, but they don't have open burning at all. So they have a ordinance where you can't even have campfires or backyard burns. So they support my decision if we go to, if it goes to a stage-two, not to have fireworks. And really, we just can't. But during a stage-one, they've also, the operations chief sent me an email saying he does support my decision for recommending to council that we don't move forward with fireworks. I understand this is a big deal, because 2020, we had the pandemic and no fireworks. Last year was the first year we had fireworks in two years. And it's a big event for the citizens, and it's a big community event. And that's, that's why it was a hard decision for me to come in here and give you my recommendation, because it is a tough decision. But based on the safety of our town, our citizens, I need to keep that in mind as well.
So is Denver going to do fireworks?
I think so. I think they are for the Rockies.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Thank you, member Russell. Member Woodward?
Just for a clarification, the stage-two fire ban, you said no burning at all. I assume that's outdoors?
That is correct.
Would say a wood-burning fireplace indoors is allowed or is not allowed?
It is allowed. That's in your private residence, but all outdoor burning is not allowed, even if, unless it's a propane, it has a propane shut-off. So like, if you went and bought a propane little pit, you know, fire pit, and it has a propane shut-off, then yes, you can use it. Smokers, you can use during a stage-two. If you notice, if you go to parks or wherever, or camping during a stage-two, you can't even have fires in a metal ring pit.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions from council? Member Noonan Camp?
You know, it's challenging, and thank you, first of all, for being here. And I hear how difficult this decision is for you and for you to come say it to us. And so I appreciate that. It is hard, and thank you for caring so much about our community. We're a month out, right? And so we're trying to make this decision early. Is there a universe where we get a lot of rain and you think maybe this is okay? Are you really thinking that that's just not going to be a possibility in a month?
So I was on a meeting last week with the Arapahoe County Emergency Manager, and it's, they look at like climate, future, you know, they have people that specialize in that. So they're looking at drought conditions, the weather, the wind conditions and all that, and projection of how many warm days we're going to have. So they're projecting we're going to be back at a stage-two by the end of the month. But again, it's a projection, unfortunately. And I mean, we can barely get seven days of weather forecast correct, so.
Very true. Thank you.
Thank you.
I guess I have a question. So is this a decision that we have to make tonight? Or is this something that we can just wait to see? If we do move to a, you know, stage-two fire ban, I completely agree that that's a time that we shut it off. But do we, do we need to give you direction tonight in terms of keeping it on or?
As the fire marshal, you do not, but it comes down to our event coordinators.
Yep. Director Underhill?
Yeah, thanks, mayor. Ultimately, we would like a decision tonight, because there's a lot that goes into the planning process for this event. Fireworks are easy, but this alternative event is much more challenging. There's a lot more moving parts. We're planning for two events technically, one in each park. So residents in all cities can participate and come out to our events. So we would like to know tonight if possible.
Thank you, Director Underhill. I was going to ask about the drones. Well, I just saw there that, you know, if it's over 10 miles per hour, then they won't fly. And it's like, have we had a day under 10 miles per hour this year? And it just seems like we've always been windy. But just wondering if that's even an option, or if it would be more likely the laser show. Was there a recommendation by staff on the two alternatives?
So staff did look into both options, both the drone and the laser show. They are booked for this year. There's no option to add those as part of the event. For this year, it's something we could look at.
For this year, it's something we could look at next year, but they are quite costly. The laser show is limited in viewing. We could do something really cool out here at the amphitheater, but capacity is an issue. You can only see the lasers from certain angles, and to do them in both parks would be a challenge. And then the drones were booked out. I think there's only four companies total, and for a hundred drones, it's between sixty and ninety thousand dollars.
My mistake, Director Underhill. I thought we were doing on a third this year for some reason. That was last year, wasn't it? But any other questions from Council? Direction from Council. I know that this is a very difficult decision. Fire Marshal Smith, you already made your decision. I know it's very difficult for you. It's very difficult for us, so I'll let Member Anderson kick us off.
Thank you. Thanks for the, the presentation. I understand, you know, kind of the pressures and everything. My preference is to plan on doing the fireworks and, you know, not being able to predict the future. If it, if it doesn't work out, then we have to do something different to the last minute, I understand, but I, I don't think, being in the, in the stage one right now and not being able to predict the future, I want to hope for the best and get enough rain and do the fireworks.
Thank you, Member Anderson. Member Wink?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Fire Marshal and Director Underhill for being here this evening. And I think, you know, we're not predicting the future in terms of reading tea leaves. Based on the data, the metrics that are used to ascertain what levels of fire ban we can anticipate, I, I think that we should forego the fireworks and just, also, I think there are some financials that are wrapped into making the decision now. And then rolling back the decision to hold the fireworks. So I think we should go with a different option this year. Safety comes first, and we have the data to show that it's probably not going to happen this year. So thanks.
Thank you, Member Wink. Member Noonan Camp?
To Member Anderson's point, if, he said, you know, let's plan to do the fireworks and make another call when we get closer if we have to. Is that an option? And what does that call look like?
There'd be a lot of challenges with a last minute call to change out the two events. We've got to book things now for the alternative events if we do not have fireworks. We have to put deposits down, and a lot of times, no refund thirty days out when we're getting there. So we need, yeah, unfortunately, if we don't have the fireworks and that's what we move forward with, the parks will be open and people will come out and picnic and all of that, but for our events, we'd be very limited in what we could add additional.
Yeah. No, I appreciate that. You know, we have to make the best decision we can with the information that's available to us in this moment. And I agree with Member Wink. I think safety first. We will not be able to live with ourselves if someone loses a home or there's a horrible tragedy in our community because we tried to do something that we knew was ill advised. And so I do support moving forward with the alternative event. I do want to still see us do something. I do think that people want to kind of keep gathering together. It's such a big day for the community, but with what I'm hearing from our safety professional and what the science is telling us, I think we have to move forward with that.
Member Woodward?
Thank you. I would agree with Member Noonan Camp and Member Wink. I thi- I think we've got to ban it right now. I remember real clearly Douglas County, and I believe it was New Year's, when they had their fires, Castle Rock and Highlands Ranch, both of them burnt or turned into wildfires. And I don't even want to I don't want to see us doing that. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Woodward. Member Russell?
Thank you. In, in deference to Member Wink and Member Noonan Camp, I also think that Member Anderson is absolutely correct. He wasn't suggesting that we put the community in danger. He was suggesting that we go ahead and order the fireworks and prepare to do that. If there's a stage two fire ban, of course, we're not going to do fireworks. But if we don't prepare, and the truth is, the park will be full of people celebrating, getting together, regardless of whether we do fireworks or not. So I'm on board with what Member Anderson is suggesting, because if we shut it down now, and, and I think, are the fireworks, if we don't use them this year, can they be saved till next year?
Yeah, we can, yeah, we can use them within three hundred and sixty-five days. We just have to schedule it within three hundred and sixty-five days.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Russell. I'll go to Mayor Protem and then back to you, Member Woodward.
I think I need some clarification on what this proposed alternative event looks like. How is it different? And why could we not just pivot the night of from the regular to the alternative? I'm not seeing the difference here.
So if we were going to go, I need to let the fireworks people know one way or another, because they do come from out of state. And then as far as if we're going to do option one or option two, we have a lot of planning, reserving and requesting for people to come, be it magicians, music, activities or whatnot. And there's a time change, so I would need to let all of the vendors know about that. So we're not able to plan them at the same way and then just pick one at the last minute, because the fireworks need to know if they need to travel to Colorado. We also need to know if we need to close like the bedding cages in the skate parks and the stuff that are included in the drop zones, which if we aren't doing fireworks, we would be able to leave those open for the community to use that night.
So we are adding some additional costs with the alternative event, but we're spending what we would be spending on fireworks on those additional costs? Is that correct?
Yes. It gives a difference of a couple of thousand dollars on what I drafted up.
I think I'm still with Member Anderson on this. I don't like canceling fireworks. I, I think it's early still. I'm all about safety in the community. I just, I think we're early to make this decision, and, and so I would continue cautiously under a sort of a yellow light as opposed to a green light this year.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Member Woodward?
Thank you. It's my understanding, I believe, from what I heard last week, we already own the fireworks. Is that correct? Yes, okay. So those are purchased, bought and paid for.
Member Woodward, I apologize. I was under the impression we were, but I'm seeing some different, what, what's the answer?
Did, did you say we're the only, or we own them? I'm sorry.
Own them.
Yes, so.
We are the proud owners of fireworks.
We are, yes. They're just housed in a different state right now.
Correct, okay. If we were to give a different date than tonight for making that decision, like something like June fifteenth or something like that, would that work? I mean.
Of this year?
Yes.
No.
Okay.
I mean, we can definitely look at a date further on, but with being under thirty days for the fireworks, I couldn't get the fireworks here, you know, sooner. If we wanted to look long term, it's definitely something that we could.
We're under thirty days now, so.
Right. So if we were going to look long term, we would be looking at like late fall, winter, or we can just put it into twenty twenty-three.
Right. Very good. Thank you. I maintain my position.
Thank you, Member Woodward. Member Noonan Camp?
Yeah, I just want to say thank you for pointing it out, Member Russell. And Member Anderson, I apologize for mischaracterizing your comment. That was not my intention. I misunderstood. So that makes much more sense to me. I, I have a question. If we move forward with the firework plan, and we weren't able to then ultimately do it based on the weather conditions, would there be, what are the financial implications to the city? Would we lose money? And what would that look like?
If we schedule the fireworks, so if we go forward and then we don't end up having the fireworks, but the fireworks are planning to come. So there's excess money. So they would return, we would be able to use everything if we do the fireworks by July fifth of twenty twenty-three. We wouldn't lose money. If we just said we didn't want to do them until December of twenty twenty-three, we would lose the initial deposit of the fireworks.
And that's the only cost that is of concern with, to the two different events. If we move forward with the, our normal event, we would lose no money as long as we use the fireworks by July fifth of twenty twenty-three.
The other considerations too with a fireworks show is traffic control, the amount of officer schedule. This alternative event cuts that down significantly because we would not anticipate the same number of people coming out to the parks if there were no fireworks. So there's a lot of moving pieces to this.
All right. Thank you.
I'm the deciding votes. I guess I have a question. So it does sound like Arapahoe County, Littleton, South Suburban, they have concerns about moving forward with the, as well as obviously Fire Marshal Smith. Moving forward, what is the mitigation plan? Or where, what would, what is the mitigation plan if there is a stray firework? Like, I know that Denver Fire is involved, but what does that look like in terms of just?
During the Fourth of July, thank you, Mayor, for the question. During Fourth of July, we do have Engine Thirty-seven onsite. They do have, they'll wet down the, the ground prior. What I'm concerned about is the drop zone behind where they shoot them off at. That's near the dog park. It's pretty dry in that area already. But if other counties do it, or if there's a lot of fireworks going off, and based on the dry conditions, it also taps a lot of resources. And that's, that was Denver Fire's concern is how many resources it does tap. So if we do have, let's say, a fire in Inglewood from a drop zone or a stray firework, and then there's other fires going on in Denver or elsewhere, it taps, it starts tapping the metro area of resources, and that's what was Denver's Fire's concern as well, based on what we saw in December from the three big ones, the Fourth of July shows in Highland Ranch, where caused quite a few field fires that turned into suburban fires, and then same with Castle Rock. And then almost a week, two weeks later, we had the Marshall Fire, which over seventy-five, over seventy-five departments had to go to the Marshall Fire. That tapped the entire metro area, and that's one of our concerns.
Thank you, Fire Marshal. This is not an easy one for me. Last year, I voted to not hold the fireworks show. Members of Council, obviously, were in favor of it, and I had, I took my son. It was one of the best guys I had last year, so. And I understand the importance of the fireworks show occurring in the city of Inglewood and partnering up with Littleton and everyone else. I just have concerns about just moving forward with the fireworks show considering what has happened over the past six months, especially with the Marshall Fire. Every city was asked about their fire mitigation plan into, in order for us to hold a, you know, fireworks show. I know we're not in a stage two right now, but in a stage one, but still considering fire, dry fire conditions potentially on July fourth. At this moment, I would have to vote no in terms of moving forward with the fireworks show. It's not something that I do lightly here. I know that it brings a lot of joy for a lot of people, and at this point, I'll just have to vote no, so. Is there anyone else on Council that wants to weigh in? Oh, Member Anderson?
Well, yeah, I just wanted to, because I made, meant that initial comment, and there were several after it. I just wanted to return to that again. I was absolutely not suggesting we do it if it's unsafe. I just don't think, I think we should always plan on doing the fireworks, and if we have to cancel it last minute, then we cancel it last minute because it's not safe. We don't, we could get a, a week's dump of rain at the end of June. We have no idea what's going to happen, but I, I trust our Fire Marshal to make the call. If it comes down to, to July fourth and, and it's dry and dangerous, we should not have fireworks. But to make that call a month out, when we could get an absolute, you know, a June full of rain, or maybe in ten days it starts raining, we have no idea. And, and so I would just prefer, as a matter of course, for how we, how we do fireworks shows and plan them, is we plan on doing them. And if we have to make the call at the last minute that we can't do them, people are going to figure out how to have fun anyway. But to have the commitment to our cities, that, that our city, that we're going to put on a fun fireworks show, if at all possible, if it's safe, we're going to cancel it at the last minute if it's not safe. I think it's just a better way, better way to go. Otherwise, we're going to end up every year, every year at the end of, at the, it's not uncommon at the beginning of June to be looking at the weather going, it looks like it may be dry. I think even that last year, we were in that situation. It was looking like a dry June, and we got plenty of rain. We were able to do it. So that happened over and over again. We canceled the fireworks a few years ago because, because of dry weather at the last minute. I understand it. It happens, but to plan it a month out, I think it's crazy.
Thank you, Member Anderson. Any other comments from Council? Member Noonan Camp?
I'm sorry, I just have one more question. I don't want to belabor this, but this is hard. We want this event, and I want to make sure I have all the information. Fire Marshal, if the conditions were what they are today, and let's say we aren't in stage two on Fourth of July, where we're at now at stage one, would you feel comfortable with the event?
As of right now, I would not feel comfortable. And just because we had one, a couple of days of rain, and of course, this, this conversation started coming up when we had snow on the ground and rain. But with the high winds, it's supposed to be ninety degrees this week, and then they base it, actually, they base a lot of these decisions from our snowfall impact fall from the spring, and we didn't get the spring and what the grasses out, like out in our fields and stuff. We could go two days with windy days, windy hot days, and it dries it out. We're back to the same condition. So that's, that's one, that's, when they make these decisions about fire bans, it's the Fire Chiefs that get together from local districts, Arapahoe County Emergency Manager, and then the Fire Marshals Association. It's not just like, hey, we're going to go to a stage two today. We're going to go to a stage one. We discuss, and then they have people that are basically, they study the ground and they study the humidity levels. Our humidity level is only at twenty percent. It is up a little bit. It was at thirteen just, just a couple of weeks ago. That they look at the humidity levels as well on the dry conditions and the grasses.
And can you share what, what conditions you would feel comfortable feeling?
I mean, honestly, if we got a little bit more rain, because we did get some, if we got a little bit more rain, because we were able to lift the stage two to stage one on Thursday. So I think we just need a little bit more rain, but you, based on what we see this week, it's supposed to be windy again, and Mayor, you mentioned it earlier. How many days have we had that was windy? Almost the entire year so far has been windy. That dries everything out. I, like I said, I would talk to quite a few other jurisdictions, Castle Rock Fire, talk to their Fire Marshal. They were, they are planning on doing fireworks. The problem is they have to get approval for, to do them for their launch site from the HOAs, and there's not one HOA is approving it because of too many fires. Homeowners down, homeowners are not feeling comfortable to approve them to do fireworks, and they have to get HOA approval, and they're not doing it because they don't feel comfortable. I know Golden canceled already. Parker's already canceled. So it, it's, it's a tough decision, and I completely understand that, and it's a hard decision for me to come in here as well because it is a great event for our citizens. I just got to make sure that we're all making the safe and right decision. And that's why I just wanted to present this to you and the facts.
Thank you. It's very helpful.
You're welcome.
Any further comments from Council? Seeing none. Thank you, Ms. Arnaldi, Director Underhill and Fire Marshal Smith for the presentation tonight. Thank you, everyone. Moving on to Agenda Item E, or excuse me, yeah. Director of Public Works Maria DeAndrea is here to discuss the EEF dissolution. It's already becoming a long night. Good evening, Director DeAndrea.
Good evening. So we have the presentation up, and I'll just briefly go through this. This was a request by City Council to just give an update, a brief update on the status of our dissolution process. So just as a reminder, here's the current EEF responsibilities. It does comprise just under thirty acres of land. And primarily, what its staff focuses on is working to manage the property, maintain the property, as well as overseeing a number of different agreements in and around the various facilities. This map shows the EEF ownership there in green. So for those darker blue buildings, the land underneath is actually owned by EEF, but the building itself is owned by a separate entity. The area there in purple, such as Walmart, and then the two facilities, the two apartment complexes actually own the land that they're on. So there is a mix of variety of ownership out there. These are some of our current EEF activities. Primarily, we, again, we work as the, essentially the maintenance director for the entire site. So we focus on a variety of contracts to execute that work, including site security and various other maintenance activities. And we do have several ongoing projects that we're undertaking, including some work on the RTV elevator, as well as within the parking garage and around the site in terms of concrete repairs and asphalt repairs. Including some work on the RTV elevator as well as within the parking garage and around the site in terms of concrete repairs and asphalt repairs. This just shows a picture of some work we did last year. We do annual flower planting as well along Inglewood Parkway and maintain those uh, tree plantings in that area. So the four remaining outstanding tasks that we talked about previously with council are um, outlined here. And I'll go into each of those in detail on the next few slides. So redemption of the certificates of participation, this is essentially was a um, uh, way to get money. And we issued certificates of participation to remodel this facility. So that was uh, issued back in, I believe, two thousand and three, refinanced in two thousand and fifteen. And we have completed that step to pay those off as of June first. We did have two outstanding claims, insurance claims. Those have been resolved in the last couple of months. Our insurance company paid out on one of those and on the other one, uh, it was withdrawn by the um, the uh, person making the claim. Environmental site documentation, this was a recommendation from uh, the legal counsel who's working with community development on the uh, framework agreement. They had suggested that we go through the environmental documentation just to see if there's anything that's changed in terms of the rules related to the site cleanup. And so they're in the process of working through those documents right now. They have not found anything to date that they've made me aware of. Um, but we are anticipating that to be completed within the next couple of months here and to get a brief report from them on the status of that. And then finally, assignment of the maintenance responsibilities. So right now, as I mentioned, the city oversees all of that area and oversees the various contracts. And the intent would be is to move that to another participate, participation uh, or participant. But could be Walmart, RTV, or one of the other uh, facility, uh, entities that we currently oversee um, through the CAM. These various CAM agreements are common area maintenance. And so what we've initially talked about is SKB, who's the potential redeveloper of the site. Is that they could take over that role sometime even before they establish the metro district, possibly next year. Or in conjunction with establishment of a metro district sometime in May of twenty twenty-three. And so we've started to have those, those discussions. They are open to that possibility of um, considering that. They have uh, done that in other areas in the past. Um, and what that would entail is if we did do that, we would need to get approval from the other CAM entities uh, about that switch in responsibility and then probably modify the agreements to make that change as well. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions or um, give any further updates at this point.
Thank you Director. Any questions from council? Mayor Protem?
I see the proposal to push CAM over to SKB. I'm wondering what the impetus for that decision is. Right now we have CAM uh, managed by EEF, which is made up of city staff uh, who control the entity. Why would we push it to SKB and essentially give up our control of CAM uh, on a city basis?
I think anticipating if that framework agreement went through is that the land and the responsibilities associated with the site would go to that develop, that redeveloper. And so with that anticipated redevelopment, that they would essentially is, oh, ultimately take that over. And so we would be facilitating that process ahead of time.
Okay, uh, I'll go on record saying I'm not supportive of that in particular. Um, I am however supportive of whatever ends EEF as quickly as possible. So uh, I'm ready to slay this dragon, uh, get rid of EEF and be done with it. And uh, we can handle whatever comes after that um, subsequent to, to the closure of EEF.
Thank you Mayor Protem. Member Russell?
Thank you. So um, it kind of seems like i- in this whole presentation that, well, first of all, let me ask one other question. It, are the certificates of participation paid off or do we have one more payment?
They are paid off. So we, we requested um, the final amount from the bank who we um, had issued those through. And they gave us the total amount and so we were able to close that on June first.
And there are no more pending lawsuits on the property?
Correct.
And as far as you know, the environmental is cleaned up?
To date, yes, that's what I'm hearing.
So there really is no reason that this council could not dissolve EEF?
Again, somebody would have to take on those responsibilities, but yes, that would be, that's that final step is who would take that, that on? I think we need to answer that question.
Well, maybe, this council maybe needs to answer that question. If we dissolve EEF, then we have to decide who we would get to do that. And I mean, it's possible that we could get a property manager. I think that that would divest the city staff totally from it. The problem has been in the past that city staff didn't like making the decisions. But I kind of felt like the presentation is just moving forward in a direction that's taking it out of council's hands again. I, I am all for dissolving EEF also and um, having council take this back. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Russell. Member Anderson?
Thank you Mayor, and thank you, uh, Director DeAndrea. I, I also am in favor of moving along the dissolution of EEF. You know, quickly and, and in terms of the common area maintenance, if we need to figure out another solution for that in the interim. Um, then we need to figure, figure that out, but not, you know, not delaying. I, I just don't want, don't wanna get to the place where we're delaying in anticipation of a framework agreement that the timeline is unknown or the outcome is unknown.
Thank you, Member Anderson. Member Woodward?
Couple items. I'm in support of dissolving EEF. Although I would wanna see a property management company in place prior to that happening. Whether it was SKB or a real estate company that specializes in property management. Uh, my other question is on the environmental. There was a Shell Oil Company plume or some sort of environmental hazard that as I recall, going back many years. There was to be a close eye kept on that? Do you have any updates specifically on that?
Uh, a little bit. So that is the gas station that's located on the south side of um, two eighty-five or Hampton Avenue. And that, that plume is still there, so it's coming underneath the roadway and, and coming onto the EEF property. So the last um, information that we received from the state was that they had closed that. And um, but that will be part of this analysis is to get that final documentation from the state and determine exactly what that says.
Okay, thank you.
Member Noon and Camp?
Yes, thank you for the presentation. If we were to move forward with the dissolution of EEF on a very quick pace. I see that there are some current projects that are currently being done. Can you explain how those might be impacted or would they?
Certainly. Um, so the, it, it, there is EEF funding or an EEF budget established each year. And we have separate capital funds that are part of that budget. And that's basically between the various contracts that are ongoing, like um, snow and ice control. Plus the projects is what gets dibbied up amongst the CAM participants or uh, folks that make up that, that group. So we would, um, but all the contracts are actually through the city. So we would still be able to probably end those within the year or complete those within the end of the year. Um, I think as part of the discussion about whether it's a property manager or whomever would take that over is do we continue that process of, of um, who collects the money, how we develop the capital improvement projects and then who executes those. But I think we're comfortable that those projects that we've identified would be wrapped up in twenty twenty-two.
Okay. I'm comfortable with moving forward as long as we're confident that those Ts are crossed and those Is are dotted. And that uh, the property, a property management company would be the right solution to both the city and to the other businesses in the area.
Thank you, Member Noon and Camp. Member Woodward?
Just one more question. Was EEF receiving a fee for property management services?
Um, a separate, we, we do pay uh, one quarter of two FTE or two staff persons' time. And that is wrapped up into that total cost that's then divvied back
Part of CAM?
Or, yes, to the various CAM um, participants.
So basically, what, any fee we were getting was basically a reimbursement of costs?
Yeah, it's based on a budget and then we work towards that budget each year. So we anticipate a budget, um, and then, but there's no other property management costs other than the actual like assumed cost for a contract. So we estimate the amount for snow and ice, for cer- security, that sort of thing. And then there's a formula to those different participants. Does that answer your question?
It does. It just, I mean, what it tells me is that a property management company coming in here to do it will have a much higher fee than EEF is charging. And that's what I was trying to get to. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Woodward. Director DeAndrea, um, has Walmart or any of these other entities been approached about amending the agreement?
Um, I have not, so I, I don't know if community development has had any discussion with other parties, other CAM participants.
Yeah, I guess one of the questions that I would have for whoever's looking into this is if we were to amend the agreement, if any of the terms change. If Walmart or anybody else decides to pay differently, just for whatever reason happens. That would be my only concern. I do wanna move forward with, lucky, you know, trying to move forward with dissolution of EEF. It, it doesn't have to be ASAP, at least in my opinion, but as long as we figured all this out, I, I do wanna move in that direction though. Uh, which sounds like council is in favor of that as well. Any other comments from council or if I misstated anybody's uh, understanding of the topic? I don't see any further questions. So Director DeAndrea, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And now I think a break before we get to the regular agenda meeting. Uh, it's a li- it's right after eight o'clock. If we could get back at eight oh, eight twelve? Eight oh twelve, uh, we'll start the meeting then. Thank you everyone. All right, everyone, we are back. Member Wink, if you're able to turn your video back. There we are. Perfect. So I call this meeting to order and third item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. So if you're able to stand for the pledge. And City Clerk, if you could take roll call.
Yes, good evening. Member Anderson.
Present.
Member Noonan Camp.
Present.
Member Russell.
Present.
Mayor Proton Ward.
Present.
Member Wink.
Present.
Member Woodward.
Present.
Mayor Sierra.
Present.
Let the record show seven ice.
Thank you. Moving on to Agenda Item Five, Minutes of the Regular City Council Meeting on May sixteen, twenty twenty-two. Does anybody have any changes? Seeing none, can I get a motion to approve?
I move to approve the minutes of the council meeting from May sixteen, twenty twenty-two.
Thank you, Mayor Proton. Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you, Member Anderson. Can we please vote?
Member Anderson.
Aye.
Member Noonan Camp.
Aye.
Member Russell.
Aye.
Mayor Proton Ward.
Aye.
Member Wink.
Aye.
Member Woodward.
Aye.
Mayor Sierra.
Aye.
Let the record show seven ice.
Thank you. Moving on to five B, Minutes of the Special City Council Meeting on May twenty-third. Any changes to that? Seeing none, can I get a motion to approve?
I move to approve the minutes of the special council meeting on May twenty-third.
Thank you, Mayor Proton. Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you, Member Noonan Camp. And can we vote?
Member Anderson.
Aye.
Member Noonan Camp.
Aye.
Member Russell.
Aye.
Mayor Proton Ward.
Aye.
Member Wink.
Aye.
Member Woodward.
Aye.
Mayor Sierra.
Aye.
Let the record show seven ice.
Moving on to Agenda Item Six A, um, this month is Pollinator Appreciation Month proclamation. I'll go ahead and read the proclamation. Whereas the city of Inglewood values its parks and open spaces, which contribute to the city's quality of life, many of the trees and plants that beautify our landscapes and form key elements of our eco- ecosystems rely on pollinators to propagate and to contribute to ecological services. And whereas pollinators of all kinds, including native bees, wasps, butterflies, and European honeybees are a critical, critically important part of our agricultural and food systems, and their pollination of a significant amount of our food supply is extremely important to food production. And whereas the loss of habitat and food supply for pollinators through the use of pesticides, development resulting in the habitat loss and negative environmental impacts are contributing to this decline. And whereas pollinators are in decline in Colorado and across the United States due to a variety of pressures, including climate change, pesticides, diseases, and parasites. And whereas based on the university, uh, scientific studies and findings that indicate the inappropriate use of pesticides pose unacceptable hazards to pollinators, several cities and counties in the United States take steps to raise awareness of this issue. And whereas the city of Inglewood wishes to acknowledge and strengthen its current policies and practices as they relate to the health of pollinators, which in turn relate to the health of the environment and people. And whereas the city of Inglewood City Council on April fifth adopted the city's first sustainability, sustainability plan with the goal focused on protecting the natural environment, including projects to increase pollinators in parks and open spaces. And whereas the city shall continue its efforts to provide and maintain vegetation on city property in a fiscally responsible manner that considers the well-being of people, plants, and pollinators, the city will strive to reduce and minimize all chemical pesticides used on city lands. And whereas the city will strive to be a leader in pollinator landscape management, it will continue to en- enhance safe and healthy pollinator forged habitat on city lands, including reviewing and revising mowing policies where possible to allow wildflowers and other appropriate flowering species to flourish and feed pollinators. When appropriate and feasible, the city will strive to incorporate and utilize native plants that are beneficial to pollinators on city-owned property, uh, properties. The city will strive to convert actively managed non-native or degraded landscape areas to native habitats that include pollinator-friendly plants. And whereas the city will follow its integrated pest management plan as the nor- normative practice in all city-owned lands, where practi- uh, practical, yeah, I can't even speak, on city property and city and its contracts shall refrain from or limit in use of, how do we say that word? I'll skip it. That may negatively affect pollinators. Where the city deems it necessary to use pesticides, the city will direct its staff and con- uh, contractors to use pesticides in a manner that minimizes potential adverse impacts on people and pollinators. Whereas the city recognizes the importance of pollinators and will support and engage in efforts to educate the broader community about integrated pest management, habitat enhancements and protection, and the actions the city is taking. The city shall continue to make available city residents and property owners information on the importance and benefits of creating and maintaining pro- uh, pollinator-friendly habitats. Now therefore be proclaimed that I Oath Daniel Sierra Mayor of the city of Inglewood and the city council hereby proclaim the month of June as Pollinator Appreciation Month in the city of Inglewood, Colorado, for the purpose of encouraging all residents to recognize and celebrate the important role pollinators play in our environment and to work actively to support and protect pollinators of all kinds in the city of Inglewood. And Member Anderson, I know you had a word to state.
Yeah, I, I wanted to speak, just speak a moment on the Pollinator Proclamation because when we first considered this last year, I, I objected to, I, I found it a bit objectionable because I thought it was, um, I worried that it would lead to over kind of multiplying proclamations. But as I've reflected on it, I, I actually recognize that, that it now ca- it captures an important and one of the core functions of municipal government, and I'm supportive of it. Um, city government should aim to cultivate, cultivate a fruitful environment for the good of its citizens and for the protection of the future. The Pollinator Proclamation captures this perfectly. Um, one in three bites of food we eat depends on pollination. We want to help Colorado be literally fruitful. Fruit trees such as peach, apple, pear, and cherry all depend on the natural reproduction process of poll- uh, pollination in order to bear fruit. It is possible for a city to actively harm the fruitfulness of the natural environment with regards to pollinators' use of certain pesticides like that big word, and the elimination of natural, of native growth environments can kill pollinators and destroy the habitats of pollinators. So I'm happy that Inglewood is committed to reducing the use of these pesticides and is actively cultivating poll- pollinator habitats. I like the pollinator garden that we have, um, at the depot now. But fruitfulness extends beyond pollinators. We want to create a fruitful environment for our businesses as well. This means we need to continue to cultivate a commercial environment that makes it easy to start and grow, uh, fruitful and productive businesses while carefully avoiding regulations or processes which actively hurt our businesses' environment. So anyway, I just wanted to say that and say thanks to the staff and volunteers in Inglewood who are helping to cultivate fruitful environment in many different ways, make our city more fruitful, and I look forward to the day when we'll celebrate fruitfulness in every area of life and culture. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Member Anderson. Uh, moving on to six B proclamation, uh, celebrating Pride Month proclamation. Uh, whereas the city of Inglewood recognizes that our nation was founded upon the principles that all people are created equal and that each person has the right to life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. And whereas all members of the Inglewood community, including those who are LGBTQ plus, have the right to feel safe, not be discriminated against, and to live without the threat of harassment. And whereas the city of Inglewood is strengthened by and thrives upon the rich diversity of all its residents, all of which contribute to the vibrant, vibrant character of this community. And whereas the city employs and serves many residents who are LGBTQ plus and who may lack visibility and acceptance based on past and present discrimination. And whereas the LGBTQ plus community has made strides in legal equality, but much work remains in order to achieve inclusion, acceptance, and full equality. And whereas for more than three decades, Pride Month has been recognized in Colorado and the United States to commemorate the Stonewall riots in nineteen sixty-nine and to affirm the dignity, equality, and contributions of the LGBTQ plus individuals. And whereas the city established the Staff-Based Diversity Equity and Inclusion Committee, made up of nineteen staff members from all departments, and unanimously approved a recommendation establishing June as Pride Month in Inglewood. Now therefore be proclaimed that I Oath Daniel Sierra Mayor of the city of Inglewood, uh, and the city council hereby proclaim June as Pride Month in the city of Inglewood, and encourage all residents to consider the contributions of LGBTQ plus individuals, and they, and affirm the dignity and worth of LGBTQ plus individuals. Seeing no comments, I'll move on to the last proclamation for Juneteenth. Uh, whereas the city of Inglewood recognizes that our nation was founded upon the principles that all people are created equal and that each person has the right to life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. And whereas the city of Inglewood is strengthened by and thrives upon the rich diversity of all its residents, all of which contribute to the vibrant character of the community. And whereas President Abraham Lincoln signed the Emancipation Proclamation on January first, eighteen sixty-three, declaring the slaves and Confederate territory free, paving the way for the passing of the Thirteenth Amendment, which formally abolished slavery in the United States of America. And whereas news about the signing of the Emancipation Proclamation was delayed, uh, some two and one-half years to June nineteenth, eighteen sixty-five, and reaching authorities and African-Americans in the South and Southwest, Western United States. And whereas June nineteenth has a special meaning to African-Americans in, and is called Juneteenth combining the words June and nineteenth, and has been celebrated by the African-American community for over one hundred and fifty years. And whereas the city established the Staff-Based Diversity Equity and Inclusion Committee, made up of nineteen staff members from all departments, that unanimously approved a recommendation of a Juneteenth proclamation and associated data, day of service. And whereas the city of Inglewood has planned a day of service on June eighteen, twenty twenty-two, to celebrate the federal holiday of June nineteenth. Now therefore be proclaimed that I Oath Daniel Sierra Mayor of the city of Inglewood and the city council hereby proclaim Juneteenth in the city of Inglewood, and urge all citizens to become more aware of the significance of the celebration in African-American history and participate in the day of service within, within Inglewood on June eighteenth. And I want to thank staff, uh, for all the work on the three proclamations, um, and for this council for, uh, seeing, seeing to it that we, uh, recognize these here in the month of June. Uh, Member Anderson, did you, you have your light on? Nope. No further questions or comments. We'll move on to Agenda Item Seven, Recognition of Scheduled Public Comment. Uh, the deadline to sign up to speak for Scheduled Public Comment is Wednesday by five PM prior to the meeting through the city clerk's office. Uh, this is an opportunity for the public to address city council, and there is an expectation that the presentation will be conducted in a respectful manner. Uh, council may ask questions for clarification, but there will not be any dialogue, and please limit your presentation to five minutes. So up first is Joseph Trujillo, an Ingle resident to address council. Good evening, Mr. Trujillo. If you could just state your name and your address or your cross streets.
Uh, yes, my name is Joseph Trujillo, and my address is, uh, well, it was one eight two four East Gerard Place, uh, apartment number one three one four at the Marx Apartments. Just recently moved to, uh, six oh one Princess Place in Littleton. Not yet moved in yet, but, uh, just signed the lease. Yes, sir. I just wanted to comment on the, uh, the meeting on the twenty-third, and I just wanted to, uh, say thank you for the opportunity to speak here tonight. And, uh, the, I wanted to applaud the, uh, the park ranger, I think it was the park ranger, the non-emergency response thing that you guys, uh, are going to implement this year, two thousand twenty-two, and also comment on what Mr. Anderson had, uh, commented on, uh, the mo- the homeless population being moved, uh, four to five blocks from Broadway. And the long-term solution, um, is probably can create more problems. And that's actually why I stayed. I just recently moved back into, uh, this area. And the biggest reason I stayed is to, um, see these problems, uh, environmental and, um, humanitarian problems that I saw. Um, I think, um, the long-term solutions for these, the, are, are not to push them away because pushing them away with the population continuing to e- increase in Colorado, there's going to be, you can't just continue to push problems away. The population's going to continue flooding. Um, long, there's a good example of a long-term solution, which is right down, uh, across the street, the, the Art Walk, um, Apartments. It's a community with, uh, businesses in the bottom, and I think those are long-term solutions. You don't need to pu- bust anybody anywhere. But people that are out on the streets, I think those are also the people that you guys touched on the twenty-third, the environmental cleanup, that's, those are the environmental workers. They just need to be repurposed and retrained, I believe. That is an entire workforce. And, you know, we, I am actually, um, representing the homeless population and homeless veterans, and I have been in some of these programs. And they're actually, um, I think there's a disconnect on what are actually, the, where these people, where we are actually being sent. And I did not know how to submit these documents until I, uh, just got here tonight, but I do have some videos I could show you, some of the places that people are being sent, including myself, and some of these programs. I've actually was kicked out of a program for not being, I guess, for being too independent. And so these programs are actually designed to keep people, I guess, to get, some programs get paid for keeping, keeping people dependent, not actually getting them independent and part of the community and contributing. And so I think that the long-term solution is something where there is a place for care and for trauma and to be retrained into the community. And I think, um, they, the, what you guys were talking about, the environmental things and moving around, like, they all took, though, that is a solution, not so much of a, a problem, but an opportunity to, um, not, I, I guess, move the problem, but embrace, like, what we have. I don't think pushing it away is going to change anything except for a problem for somebody else. And me being a, uh, I guess what had made me really inspired by this is being a resident from Inglewood for a long time. And Packy Romans Park is a good example of the creativity, you know, of what that can do. I guess it's helped me a lot. And, um, earth medicine is huge in my life. And I think that's what, um, the lot of this homeless population, the demographics are widespread, but all of them have experienced a lot of trauma, and they're continuing to experience trauma. And putting them in programs such as hotels that are, it's no secret, they're filled with drugs, and drugs are getting worse and worse and worse, especially this fentanyl epidemic. And that's not a solution long-term. It's actually creating more problem, more trauma. And I think removing that and ki- giving people a community where they could belong and be retrained by people who, uh, like peers, such as Ms. Kelly, who's going to be coming to speak tonight as well, Ms. Donna Norton, who works for Ms., uh, Mental Health Colorado. Long-term facilities such as maybe, um, it's, another part example is, um, Cherry Creek Reservoir. There's, it's a big wide open space. Now, if you teach people earth medicine, be, anyone knows, go grounding outside, you know, um, teach them to garden, Arya Vedas, that's earth medicine. What is best for trauma? It's not, you know, pharmaceuticals, it's not, uh, these classes, it's not these buildings, it's outside nature. And what do we need? We need environmental cleanup, we need community that is, uh, I guess, um, more embraced, you know what I mean, not pushed away. But how do we utilize what we have and save money? And like you said, these tax dollars that we need for the police department, why can't we repurpose what we have and have our people contribute instead of pushing away and asking for grants to place them somewhere else, repurpose them? And that's actually what I'm doing. And I'm not saying asking you guys for solutions. This is actually what I've done myself. Since I've been back, I've got my diploma in physical fitness, so I could, uh, work with at-risk youth. I've invested into this, uh, Pinoy Metabolic Analysis Device to get people more in tune with their, more responsible and aware of their, their health, such as, you know, the drug use and all these things. But there are many ideas and no amount of time.
Mr. Trujillo, your five minutes are up. Thank you, thank you for speaking tonight. Uh, let's see if there's any questions from council tonight. Mayor Proton?
Just one question. You, you mentioned that you were homeless for some time, if I, if I heard correctly.
Just one question, you, you mentioned that you were homeless for some time, if I, if I heard correctly?
Yes, sir, until today.
During, during that time, did you meet anyone else that you thought just couldn't be helped? They wanted to be on the street, that, that's how they chose to live, or, uh, you know, they, they had other choices, but, but they, that's what they were doing, because that's what they just felt like doing.
Absolutely, and there is, there is that out there. And so not everybody can be saved, and I think it's not a secret at all, and I don't think it's a surprise to anybody, but since COVID has happened, a lot of the population, a lot of the workforce is, has been terrible, and it's been on the decline, there's hiring signs everywhere, and a lot of people are getting rewarded for not working. And that is a big problem, but there are also people like me who get stuck in that, there's a blanket term, it's a blanket, if you're homeless and you are considered, um, a drug user, abuser, you know what I mean? And some of these people, they're running from domestic violence, they're afraid, they don't want to be, um, you know, and there's a lot of people, they are down on their luck, they have bankruptcy, I can't tell you how many apartments I've applied for, but I have a bankruptcy, and I have a, like, a six-hundred credit rating. I've been applied maybe six apartments a month, and I get denied every time. Even with the V A. assistance, I am a veteran, Army veteran, I've served in, on the Wildland firefighting crew, I was on the Black Forest Fire and Boulder Flood. Um, I'm honest working, you know, I work, I'm ninety percent disability rating from the V A., and there's many veterans out there, even, especially the pre-Ronald Reagan era veterans, that they don't get benefits, and they do lose hope. I'm just a glutton, and I don't, I'm leaning to that pressure, and I feel like I have a responsibility, not just to the people, but to the earth as well, and to make a change. And like you guys said, to change the trend, I think we all are, are able to do that. But there are people, there are half of the population, I believe, want to do better, and they don't have role models or an example to show them how. There's a disconnect, you know, and I do, and there is some of the population that have given up. And so, but what about two generations from now? You know, and that's the thing, we have to, I think, give the opportunity for those people, for the ones like me, and the ones who do care, or the people who are surviving that and want to make it, and pull people up with them. And that's exactly what it is, learn, learn, that's what I'm trying to do here, is like, show you can do this, and I walk with these guys everywhere, I got most of these degrees here, and this library downstairs. And I still continue to do that, you know?
Yeah, I don't wanna cut you off, but I, I think you answered the question, uh, that was what I was most interested in knowing, thank you.
Thank you very much, yeah, sorry about that.
Mr. Trujillo, you stated that you had some additional, uh, information that you wanted to share with council, is it possible for you to provide it to our city clerk?
Absolutely.
Okay, and we'll definitely take that in, uh, information, but I see no other questions, oh, Member Wink, sorry. Go ahead, Member Wink.
Uh, Mayor, I, I was out, also going to say what you said, I, I wanted to make sure Mr. Trujillo would share that information with the clerk, that's all, thank you.
Perfect, Mr. Trujillo, thank you very much for coming tonight and, and telling us your story, really appreciate it.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Uh, next up is, uh, Kelly McCloskey, an Inglewood resident to address council regarding homelessness. And forgot to mention, but Mayor Protown will be providing, uh, responsible public comment tonight. Good evening, Ms. McCloskey.
Good evening.
If you could just state your name and your address or your cross streets.
I'm gonna need some help here. Just push. What's that? I'm sorry, I don't know how to use this.
No worries.
It's just a sign. Okay. There's different picture. See all. It's not touchscreen. Where's the mouse?
Zeagle.
Oh, it's a mouse. Okay, how do I go back to? There's not.
Oh, I guess that's the first picture.
Okay. Could you need the? Okay.
Do you need the hand?
Okay, could you do this? Okay, sorry, you guys.
We have copies up here as well, Ms. McCloskey, but. Nope, actually, go ahead, Ms. McCloskey, if you could just state your name and your address or cross streets.
Okay, my name's Kelly McCloskey, my cross streets are Radcliffe and Alatty Street. Okay, I have been our Inglewood resident since nineteen ninety-eight. Many of you don't know me, I am just your average Inglewood resident who loves the city of Inglewood. However, if you go to Movement Fifty-two Eighty, Giving Heart Cap One Eighty, Inglewood Table, Hat Forest, Rude at Three-oh-Three, or Judge Joe Jefferson, and ask if they know me, they will all answer yes. God has put it on my heart to serve our community in any way I can. I am a mother of three children, and if you wouldn't have been, if it wouldn't have been for public housing, I would have been living in my car and homeless. I volunteered for several years with Inglewood Bible Church Food Bank until it closed. I am a snow buddy to my neighbor who is ninety-eight years old, June, uh, June seventeenth. I have been volunteering with the homeless community since COVID began. I am not speaking on behalf of Movement Fifty-two Eighty, but my own personal experience with volunteering. At May, at the May twenty-third council meeting, I believe the city was given misleading information. Mike Sandgren, Chair of Change the Trend, stated Movement Fifty-two Eighty is open Sunday, Monday, Wednesday, and Fridays for the homeless community. Although they are open these days, some of the days are to provide to a specific demographic, not to the entire community. If you look at the flyer I submitted, you will see Movement Fifty-two Eighty open on Sundays, operating as Lost and Found Church, open from twelve-thirty to until two. Monday is Celebrate Recovery, open from four-thirty until seven. Wednesday is Community Day, open from ten to one for our entire community, and from one until four, young, youth only. And Friday nights is five to seven for young adults. If you look at the chart that was presented on May twenty-third, you may be inclined to believe Movement Fifty-two Eighty has services for the homeless on all these days. It is important that the community has accurate information, as I stated above. Also, severe weather has mentioned the services provided, what a nightmare that was la, last year. People had to call severe weather at nine-thirty to get a voucher. Most of the homeless communities don't have phones, if no center is open for service, how are they supposed to call? I would drive around Inglewood looking for people I knew would need a phone and let them use my phone. Once we started calling, it would be like calling a radio station trying to win, win concert tickets, everyone is calling at the same time. If you're lucky enough to get through, they were told they need to go to Spirit of Hope Church at one o'clock to pick up a voucher. How are they going to get to the, that location? I would tell them where, where to meet me and give them a ride. Only a certain amount of vouchers, approximately eighteen, which does not even cover a third of our people who are in need of a voucher on cold weather nights or given out. And if you weren't lucky enough to get a voucher, too bad. A young man wasn't lucky that day. I submitted a picture of what happened to his toes that night. Because of his toes getting frostbite, disqualified him the next day, the next day, for, I'm sorry, the next frostbite, oh, I lost my train. Next day to get a voucher through Hat Force because of medical condition. I also submitted a picture of what happens to our homeless community when they fall asleep. People beat them, rob them, and also murder them. I submitted a picture of a young man who myself in Movement Fifty-two Eighty was working to help, to get off the streets. He was murdered at the Duck Pond while sleeping, this broke my heart. I can also tell you many success stories of people myself or Movement Fifty-two Eighty have walked alongside. And I did what it took to get, help get them off the streets, appearing in court with them, getting their social security cards, food stamps, job interviews, et cetera. Mike, Lee, Alex, Eric, who are all living in their own apartments, Warren, who is in a sober living home. Megan is a, in a program, graduated from culinary school, Arnold, Britton, Brad, Aaron, Victor, Eric, Joel, Joe, Cole is in sober living in Hazelbrook. I personally believe we need some kind of homeless shelter or affordable housing. I understand that some people are on the, are homeless because of choice, but there are also people that want to get off the streets. How can we get off the streets if you can't get a, if you get a job and don't have a safe place to sleep, shower, or eat? As you make your decision on obstruction of city sidewalks, I would like you to consider what council member Rita Russell mentioned about the Gothic Theater when people are sitting on the sidewalk. Is that going to be an obstruction of public sidewalk? The homeless community don't have clocks or phones to know the time. Many of them show up at Movement Fifty-two Eighty before we open, sit in front until the doors open. Are they going to be given a ticket for sitting out front waiting for the doors to open? The last thing our homeless community should have to worry about is getting a ticket they can't pay. We are in need of a building that allows for us to help in a larger capacity. I know the team at Movement Fifty-two Eighty would dedicate time, staff, and volunteers. And I'm gonna show some of the pictures. This was a kid that got frostbite. This is Cole, who we worked with to get her back sober.
Ms. McCloskey, thank you for your time, you had five minutes to present the material. I, I know, you can slide through the pictures while we ask questions, if there's any questions from council. I don't see any questions, Ms. McCloskey, thank you very much for coming tonight.
Okay.
Moving on to the next speaker is Brenda Hupka, an Inglewood resident to address council regarding solar access regulation. Good evening, Ms. Hupka.
Good evening.
If you could just state your name and your address or cross street.
Uh, Brenda Hupka, thirty-six, thirty-nine South Fox Street. Okay, I'm here to ask council to consider, um, a way to mitigate the way the, um, scrapes that are happening and redevelopment is happening, uh, to mitigate the bad effects of that to our neighbors, and to consider acting on a solar access municipal code. Where this comes from is I have solar panels that I got five years ago. And five years ago, I never imagined that, um, somebody would redevelop on my block so very tall as to create shade on the house next door. Now, my neighbor is, um, retired and elderly, and she has no plans to scrape her house, but she will, uh, give this to her children, and they probably will sell it. And there is nothing that will stop another developer from coming in and, of course, redeveloping the houses, they should, maybe, they can. But just building so high as to then, uh, give my house so much shade that my solar panels are, are, I can't even use them. And I got to thinking about this and asking other neighbors if this is a problem for them. And they actually, I learned that some people, um, have actually not been able to, uh, use their gardens after some of the development that's happened, or, uh, enjoy the south-facing windows that they thought they bought. So I looked into this, and I found out that there is a solar access regulation that Boulder's done, um, and that it's, it's designed to protect solar access just on the south side. Now, this doesn't stop development at all from happening, it just means that if someone were to scrape a house, they need to do a solar, um, assessment. And that is determined by how tall they're gonna build this, how much shade do they give to the property next door? And if it's too much shade, they can't build it, or they can seek a variance, they can still ask, hey, do you mind if I build this structure that's so tall that it will shade your property? Now, on my block, on South Fox Street, there's a lot of redevelopment. There's about three houses down, you'll see one that is excessively tall, it's two units. Behind me, they haven't built them that hot, that tall. And they weren't very nice houses to begin with, they kinda needed to be scraped. So, the, I'm not trying to be anti-development here. Um, but I have provided a link to the city's municipal code, and they've done a lot of the homework there, you'll, you'll see. Um, so they would, a new home builder would require, would be required to prepare a solar analysis. And that'll say, if, if the shade is, is anywhere falling onto the adjacent property's land, then they have to get a variance. Now, um, I did, uh, try to get, um, some signatures for this, because I wanted to gauge popular opinion for something like this, I wouldn't want, you would wanna do something that would be absolutely, um, voted against, say, in, in, like a trash meeting. And I did get fifty-four signatures, I put it out on Nextdoor, and I put it on just some local Facebook pages, like Inglewood Unleashed, or You Know You're From Inglewood If. And you'll see, I provided you some of the names of the people, I'm not gonna say them out loud, but you'll see, I know you know these people, and you know they don't fall in either extreme of our, of our politics. They're not from case, this isn't a case agenda, just because I said solar, right? Um, but some of the comments were, um, I agree with this petition, these new residences and buildings are wrecking our community, we want solar access and privacy. Another one, I enjoy my gardening, which obviously needs plenty of sunshine, I also enjoy the privacy of my backyard. And I don't want my neighbors to be able to have a full view of my backyard. Um, Code Next, by the way, is not ticking this up, you need to know that, I go to every Code Next meeting. This is not on their agenda. Um, and another one is, I bought my house in Inglewood because it was specifically built with the largest windows and the most used rooms facing south, even my basement bedroom gets direct sunlight. If my neighbors ever scrape the house to my south and build a huge replacement, like what's being done, my house, plants, and overall well-being will lose its natural light. So, again, I've provided, um, a link to Boulder's municipal code and what is also their solar access guide, what they give developers. So I know this isn't, is, and you know, this does affect, when we have these investors come in this community and, and, uh, tear down some of this stuff, it does affect our overall pricing, and it's infecting, affecting our, uh, the price of rent. So, you know, if we cannot build such gigantic things, maybe we can keep the housing down to something affordable.
Thank you, Ms. Hupka.
What'd she say?
You got a little bit of applause there. Um, any questions from council? Seeing none, Ms. Hupka, thank you very much for your presentation tonight.
Thank you.
Moving on to, that concludes, uh, recognition of scheduled public comment, we'll move to recognition of unscheduled public comment. Same rules apply, but we are limited to three minutes, and we have one speaker tonight, it's Gabriella Wilson.
Actually, we've got two here and one online.
Two here and one online? Okay, well, we'll start with, uh, Gabriella Wilson, and then I'll go to you, city clerk, so. Good evening, Ms. Wilson, if you could just state your name and your address or cross streets.
Thank you, um, I'm Gabriella Wilson, or you could call me Gabby, um, and I live on the corner of Tufts and Huron. And I just wanted to say thank you to my city council. Um, I'm new to Inglewood, we just moved here in twenty twenty, January twenty twenty. Um, and I'm just really proud to be a resident here, um, to know people that are on my city council. Um, and I just, I wanted to say thank you on the record for all of the thoughtfulness that you put in, every single person. Um, even though you disagree, there's always really good conversation, um, you know, and the fact that it's open to public comment, um, is really important to me, to be able to see that, and just to be able to participate in that is really sweet, so. There's a lot of tragedy, um, in life, but also a lot of beauty and a lot of good work to be done, so, just wanted to say thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson, and welcome to our city, any feedback from our council? Seeing none, Ms. Wilson, thank you very much for your time tonight. City clerk, I'll pass it to you for the second person.
Next, we have Mary Colletti.
Good evening, Mary, if you could just state your name and address their cross streets. Good evening.
Good evening, everybody on council, thank you so much for all you do. Thank you, Mayor, thank you, everyone on council, and thank you, everyone from the city, I much appreciate it. I am here to tell you.
Uh, Mary, before you start, uh, name and cross streets or address.
Mary Colletti, I live at Inca and Inglewood Parkway.
Thank you.
So thank you for getting me back on track. So, I, I just wanna say, so from Memorial Day, I was out looking at the, at the fountain and enjoying my cup of coffee from Nixon's, and I saw many people walk past me with a whole bunch of bags that had all these bruises and, and cut, and, and all, all these marks on their faces. I, 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 um, have, yesterday, I, I was with my dad drinking coffee outside my favorite coffee shop, and I saw somebody with a flat tire. Ooh, that's not good. Okay, thank you. I, somebody came up to me with a flat tire and said, do you know where I could get this fixed? And he had pinpoint eyeball, or he had pinpoint pupils, and I didn't get a good vibe from him. And if it wasn't for my dad, I would have left, I would have, I would have left, 'cause I don't feel safe in my community. So, my dad was a, I was a sitting duck because I didn't wanna leave my dad. So, but, so then, the barista, he comes up because he had gone to his car, and he called the cops. And so, today even, I have gone into an, another local shop, and somebody walked in, and they followed me in, they were mentally altered. And I just, I don't feel safe, this is, this is not good. So, we, we need to help, we need to help the positive with helping people get, help, the shelters so that they can get their lives put back together. But also, there, there's a balance, like, we need to find, we need to find shelters for everybody to clean up and find the resources, and really truly give them the right resources. Instead of throwing money at somebody to look into things and, and getting improper feedback to city council and things like that. I don't feel. I don't feel comfortable in where I live, and I live really close to downtown. So I much appreciate this, and I know it's not an overnight fix and things like that, but I just want to tell you, this is the first time I've actually not felt safe. And I've had to like motor away from things, and it's been the last week. And I can usually avoid and like positively impact things, so thank you for your time and your consideration.
Ms. Colletti, thank you very much for your time tonight. Any feedback from council? Seeing none, thank you very much for speaking tonight.
Thank you, thank you for your time.
And city clerk, one person online.
Denise Archuleta, are you there?
Hi, yes, I am here, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, so if you could just state your name and cross streets for the record.
Okay, my name is Denise Archuleta, and I live off of Arapahoe, I'm sorry, Jordan and East Fremont Avenue. I'm on the fringes of Inglewood, actually a block away from the Centennial Public Works Building. I'm not sure we should be in Inglewood out here. Thank you so much for taking me in this unplanned moment. I'm calling because I live in a tax credit property called Centennial East. And, you know, the whole program of tax credits for the property managers and doesn't really help the disabled save very much money. It's kind of a fraud, I think, but that's not why. I'm, I am on this call because I want to be able to claim my balcony as a clean airspace. I am in this property because I have a disability and I have cancer. And they let everybody and anybody here, I've seen people selling stolen goods out of their car, whatever. I don't know how they vet people, but I'm disabled, so I don't have the luxury of affording a nicer place to live. But this community has got a lot of problems, and I think the, thank God, Arapahoe County Sheriff's Office is just like half a mile away. But what I don't like about this is I want the city of Inglewood to explore the idea of an ordinance that allows people with disabilities to declare their outdoor space their balcony, which I pay for in my rent. I have SSDI, but I have to work to pay my rent, I have cancer that's getting worse. And there's people here who are choosing to give themselves cancer. They spend a ton of money on cigarettes and pot, so I don't know why you guys think people don't have money, but they do. Because they spend it on that, and I'm an independent, I'm not a Democrat or Republican, don't put any political, like, decision on me. I'm just saying that as a disabled person, I would qualify to live in this quote-unquote "tax credit" property, where the property managers get these tax credits, but I don't really get any benefits as a person with disability. And so part of the rules in the complex are that they're not allowed to smoke pot, which I'm glad, but they do anyway, but they're allowed to smoke cigarettes on their balcony. And what happens to me and people like me is we wind up being trapped in our apartments because we can't sit outside because everyone around us is smoking. And I don't think that, given they get special credits, that they should be allowing people to smoke on the balcony interfering and causing health problems for people who are already disabled. And I'm, I'm very upset about this, and I actually just got on this, I just got off, got out of the leasing office from signing my lease, and I didn't realize that people could smoke on their balconies because I have a very good neighbor below me. But if a person below me smokes, I'm going to be trapped in my apartment all summer because I won't be able to sit on my balcony and enjoy my balcony that I pay for because someone below me is going to be sitting out there smoking. And then interfere, I can't breathe, so I just, I-
Ms. Archuleta, your three minutes are up.
Okay.
We may have some questions from council here, let's see if we do.
Thank you.
Any comments from council? Member Russell has a question for you, Ms. Archuleta.
Thank you.
I think you are probably in Inglewood zip code, but not in Inglewood proper. And I'm not sure that we as a city council can help you. I don't know if you're in unincorporated Arapahoe County, you may want to talk to the county commissioners.
Okay.
Thank, thank you, Member Russell. I was going to state the same thing, Ms. Archuleta, we have a responsive public comment, I'm not sure if Mayor Protem has that information in front of him or knows it, but we may be able to. But we could get, we'll get there here in a second, but any other questions from council? Seeing none, Ms. Archuleta, thank you very much for speaking tonight.
Thank you.
That now concludes unscheduled public comment. I will pass it over to the Mayor Protem for his response.
I'll start with Ms. Archuleta, so if you're still online, I hope that I can provide you some helpful information here. The use of the word "Inglewood" associated with postal codes in further east in Arapahoe County is a source of confusion for a lot of people. My own parents live in Centennial, and my father is consistently confused about where the Inglewood borders lie. I looked based on the address that you gave or the general location that you gave on the county's mapping website, and I see a wedge of unincorporated Arapahoe County off of Arapahoe and Jordan. It's bordered by both Centennial and Aurora. So I would suggest, as the Mayor Protem or the council member Russell stated, the county commissioners may be able to assist you with your problem. If you want to contact me and give me your address, I can put you in touch with the appropriate elected official. But unfortunately, based on your address, there isn't anything that this body can do to assist you on that. Moving on to the rest of the public comment. First of all, I want to extend my thanks to everybody who spent their time coming here tonight. We heard a fair amount about homelessness, and we have heard a fair amount about homelessness in recent weeks. It's one of those seemingly intractable problems that it is very difficult to develop public policy solutions for. And the duty of this body is to develop public policy to, that assists our constituents and our fellow residents, both housed and unhoused. And I want to, in particular, think, Ms. McCloskey, I, I have a great appreciation for people who see a problem and work towards a solution. And you are actively working in a community that I don't understand and I have not spent a lot of time working with. So I would like to talk to you more offline about some of the things that you've seen and perhaps some of the suggestions, solutions that you might suggest, places that we can put our money. The city is actively investing in the Tri-Cities Initiative, it's the best solution that we've come up with thus far. There are a lot of things waiting to come online. I'm sure that there's at least some familiarity with that amongst the people that spoke tonight. Mr. Trujillo's story was interesting to me, and if he were still here, I would invite him to have coffee with me. I don't know if anybody has his contact information, but I would love to sit down and chat with him more about his experience in general. One, one of the things, one of the faults that I'll admit is that when we were looking for solutions to this problem, I failed to invest a lot of personal time investigating from both sides. I relied on the things that I would hear on the dais from members, from residents, from my constituents as I was knocking on doors. It's clear tonight that there is more information to be gathered, and I look forward to having some more of those unofficial talks so that I can get perspectives from both sides. Brenda, thanks for coming tonight, it's always good to see you. We should get together soon as well. Solar access, I, I like solar, I think it's great, and I'm surprised that Code Next isn't actually talking about it. So I don't know if this body can encourage them or help them find some direction in that way, but as we work on our overall development policies, I think it's important that we address everything, including solar access, as it is becoming a larger issue in our city. Ms. Wilson, come by anytime. Thank you, it's refreshing. So I look forward to seeing you again, even if you do want to present a problem at some point. And Mary, again, both sides, it's helpful to hear perspectives coming from the differing constituencies who have differing needs. And I, I see you back there sitting next to Ms. McCloskey, I hope that the two of you have had an opportunity to talk a little more tonight and perhaps in the future as well. I think that covers public comment, I did not hear any council requests except for the possibility of investigating solar access with our Code Next group. I, I don't know how to word that in a way that it fits, but I'd like to forward that to community development as something that could be potentially investigated by the citizens' community that is, is investigating our land use code right now.
Thank you, Mayor Protem, anyone else? Seeing none, moving on now to consent agenda items, section nine. We're pulling three items, both of the items under nine B and nine C two are going to get pulled. So anybody else want to pull any of the remaining two? Seeing none, can I get a motion to approve nine A one and nine C one?
Move nine A one and nine C one?
Correct, thank you, Member Woodward, could I get a second?
Second.
Thank you, Member Anderson, can we please vote?
Member Anderson?
Aye.
Member Nenencamp?
Aye.
Member Russell?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Ward?
Aye.
Member Wink?
Aye.
Member Woodward?
Aye.
Mayor Sierra?
Aye.
Let the record show seven aces.
Thank you, now moving on to nine B one, the proposed rate increase for stormwater utility fund. Member Russell, you asked to pull this item, and I'll let you ask your question.
Thank you, mayor, and actually, I think that when, the thing that concerned me a little bit when I read this is the, the amount of the increase in the fee, not that, but just that the public needs to be aware of this instead of just putting it on consent agenda. I did have a couple of comments here, so hang on just a second. One question that I do have is why are we putting quarterly fees in the ordinance seeing that we were, that we are charging monthly?
And Director DeAndre, I believe, are you able to take that question?
Yes, thank you, I think it was to provide consistency with previous resolutions, and so we could compare that from year to year. But they would be charged, as you said, on a monthly basis.
But it's not, it's not really transparent, and I guess what I'm asking is, are we going to need to go back and address that or not necessarily? Can we, and maybe this is a question for the city attorney, can we leave them as monthly charges in the ordinance? And yet we are being charged monthly?
Okay, Sean just clarified. Let me pull up the language.
Member Russell, you were, I think you stated monthly twice, but I think you meant-
But I meant quarterly and then monthly.
Great, okay. And Member Russell, if you don't mind, if I jump in just because I'm just, you asked a similar question last time around regarding just quarterly showing up on the bill itself. So I believe there was a council request regarding that, but this is a separate question, correct?
Right, yes.
Well, the ordinance as written states that the stormwater fee shall be billed quarterly for residential and commercial, quarterly or annually.
So it, it states in the ordinance it's going to be billed quarterly, but it is being billed monthly, is that correct?
Well, generally, I take the position that we follow the ordinance as written. So if the ordinance says that it's on a quarterly billing cycle, then I would advise city staff to bill it quarterly. If the intent is that we bill it monthly, then it would be my preference that the ordinance say that it's on a monthly billing cycle. And if we did amend that tonight, then it would require another second reading. Because under city charter, we have to have the reading in the exact same form, both first and second. So if we do amend that tonight, then this would count then as the first reading, and then we would put it on the next regular meeting agenda for second.
Okay, and I do think if we're going to bill it, we need to amend it.
Thank you, Member Russell, for that catch, did you have any other questions on this?
Not on this one.
Thank you, Member Russell, Mayor Protem.
I'm inclined to agree with what I've heard thus far that we should amend to monthly. Is there anything that we would risk relative to proposed funding or loans or other such things if we amend this ordinance tonight?
No.
Well, then, I'm going to make a motion at this time to amend the ordinance to show the monthly billing as opposed to quarterly, with my thanks to Member Russell for this catch.
Thank you, Mayor Protem, could I get a second on the amendment?
Oh, well, have we, do we have a main motion?
Oh, wait, we don't.
Can you make a motion with amendment?
Yes, I move to approve, what is this, nine-
B one.
C one?
Nine B one.
Nine B one, with the amendment from quarterly to monthly billing.
Second.
Thank you, Mayor Protem, and thank you, Member Anderson. Any, can we please vote? Actually, any, any comments before we vote?
Mayor, I have a comment.
Sure.
I actually reviewed the municipal code, also referenced within the ordinance, EMC twelve dash five dash five. It states that the stormwater fee shall be billed and collected with the quarterly water and sewer bill. So if we bill it monthly, it appears that we also should amend municipal code to reflect a monthly billing cycle.
Multiple changes.
I have a point of information then.
Yeah, thank you, city attorney, go ahead, Mayor Protem.
Does that mean that we should table this until we can get the full ordinance update?
That would be my preference, it's quite a bit cleaner.
Okay, so, I'm just trying to think through the process here. We're at second reading, so we table for an amended version, and then the amended version comes forward on first reading?
Yes, that's exactly right.
Okay, so I'm going to move to table nine B one until our next regular meeting, where we can consider the amended ordinance.
Thank you, Mayor Protem, could I get a second?
A second.
Thank you, Member Anderson, any comments, Member Woodward, did you still have a comment?
No.
So then, does that mean we're not, are we going to vote on both the amendment to the billing and the amendment to the-
You withdrew, I, I believe Mayor Protem did withdraw his original amendment, did you not? I guess we haven't withdrawn now that I think about it.
No, we're tabling, so we would address-
Right.
The amendment at the next session.
But I guess, Member Russell, you're stating, you're stating that the, the-
Yes, I was just asking if we're voting on both of them or we're, we'll table it and then we'll address the changes at the next.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
I got it, Member Woodward?
For my clarification, so what we're doing is, we're going to have an amended ordinance for the municipal code that will be coming forward, changing it to monthly, and then this will be revised to reflect that also monthly. So two documents.
Well, I was actually just looking, we had a little bit of discussion about the single subject rule, and of course by charter, our ordinances can only have a single subject. So I need to do a short analysis to determine if amending the code for the billing cycle and then the amounts for the billing can be in the same ordinance. Most likely, it will be two, but I, I will do that analysis.
Thank you.
Thank you, Member Woodward, Member Anderson.
Maybe while we're doing the analysis on that, if we've, we've been doing monthly billing for quite some time now, so do an analysis on the code and see anywhere else where it says quarterly, where it should say monthly, we could just fix them all at the same time.
We are actually doing that for every section of code, it's just, I've only been here a year, so it's taking a bit of time. We are actually doing that for every section of code. It's just, I've only been here a year, so it's taking a bit of time.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Seeing none, can we vote on the amendment to table?
Member Anderson?
Aye.
Member Noonan Camp?
Aye.
Member Russell?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Ward?
Aye.
Member Wink? Member Woodward?
Aye.
Mayor Sierra?
Aye.
Let the record show seven aces.
Thank you. Moving on to nine B two. Member Russell, you had this one as well.
So I don't remember seeing anything in here about monthly billing if that's in here also, but do we have sufficient staff to do the work that the loans will generate?
Yes, we're evaluating how we deliver the project, so it's, it could be a combination of both staff and outside professional services. Most likely, it will be a combination of that.
And then, will this come back to city council for approval of increase in interest rates or total loan value if rates go up? Or is this different than the previous one that we've done?
This, the rate is locked at two and a quarter percent, and the way that it works is the Colorado Department of Power went out for bonds already, so they were the bondholders, and then we're just essentially using them as a bank for up to the twenty-six million. So we can take out as much as we want, and then they'll establish the payback period and the interest, or with that two and a quarter percent interest rate as we take those funds out. So we're, that's, that's, it's a great benefit to us into how we manage that fund. Does that answer your question?
Yes, that answers that question. And so that is already locked in?
Correct, it is.
And then, there's a, there's a statement that I highlighted, and it says, "WPCRF loan avoids the need for the city to cash fund storm sewer capital improvements and spreads repayment over many years. The result is a more equitable share of costs among those that benefit from improvements now and customers who will benefit in the future." Could we cash fund it now without incurring any debt?
We could not. So we're not generating enough revenue through the annual fees or the monthly fees that we're collecting to cash fund these projects, so especially with S one and S two, which this is intended to pay primarily for. That rough cost is, we're at twenty to twenty-three million. We do not have that in the bank right now.
Okay, thank you, because I, the way this statement read, I thought, well, maybe we could cash fund it. Thank you.
Not quite.
Any other questions from council? Seeing none, can I get a motion to approve nine B two?
I'll move nine B two.
Thank you, Member Woodward. Could I get a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Member Anderson. Any further comments? Seeing none, can we please vote?
Member Anderson?
Aye.
Member Noonan Camp?
Aye.
Member Russell?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Ward?
Aye.
Member Wink?
Aye.
Member Woodward?
Aye.
Mayor Sierra?
Aye.
Let the record show seven aces.
Yep, moving on to nine C two, I asked to remove this from consent agenda items just based off the email that we received earlier tonight. Billy Ballack Council received this, but based on just the fact that there may be potential grants available to help fund a boiler system, and I just asked Director DeAndrea to talk to the feasibility of this. Director DeAndrea, do you have any comments regarding potentially using grant funding for different type of boiler?
Yeah, so the, we did receive an email this afternoon speaking to the possibility of an alternate type of system that might be more sustainable, and that there is the potential, in the, probably it sounds like the near future, to have potential grant system. In talking with staff more about this, we did determine the building, the rec center, that we're purchasing this equipment for to do the boiler and some of the HVAC equipment. It was built in nineteen eighty-seven. It is designed, the entire building, for hot water heat through the boiler system, and so we're not sure at this time what the retrofit opportunities would be where we could take advantage of a grant of this sort, given the nature of the building and how it's designed and configured. We are also at the stage where we need to do this work yet this summer and fall. So the system, we're not able to get parts, we're not able to replace it efficiently, and so we need to get this new equipment in place before the winter season. Otherwise, we're unsure that if the system went down, that we could properly heat the rec center. So given those factors, we are working on various other sustainability efforts within our other city facilities. We're saying that, not necessarily for this project, but certainly for other ones, we can consider some of these grant opportunities. So staff's recommendation would still be to move forward with this contract, purchase this equipment, and then move forward to have a contractor install the equipment before this fall.
Thank you, Director DeAndrea. So there would be quite a bit of impact to the rec center if we wanted to approve this tonight.
Yes, we feel that this is necessary to move forward.
All right, thank you, Director DeAndrea. Member Woodward?
This is for heating and air conditioning, not for warming the water of the pool, these two boilers.
Correct, so it's, well, it's the boiler, it's a hot water heat system to heat the building, so it's done through a boiler system and then the?
But it has nothing to do with the pool other than the room.
I believe it's just for the heating of the air itself, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other further comments? Mayor Pro Tem?
Can we place a copy of the email that we all received today in the public record, perhaps attach it to the minutes of our next meeting? I would just like to make sure that it makes the public record. We've made reference to an email that we received that the members of the general public obviously do not have because it went to us just this afternoon.
I can, I can attach it to the agenda, which will be on the public portal under this item.
That would be just fine, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Thank you, city clerk. Would no further comments. I'll make the motion to move nine C two. Could I get a second?
Second.
I'll second.
Thank you, Member Noonan Camp. Just beat you to it. Member Wink, any further comments? Seeing none, can we please vote?
Member Anderson?
Aye.
Member Noonan Camp?
Aye.
Member Russell?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Ward?
Aye.
Member Wink?
Aye.
Member Woodward?
Aye.
Mayor Sierra?
Aye.
Let the record show seven aces.
Thank you, Director DeAndrea, for your quick work on that. Now moving on to agenda item ten, we do have a public hearing tonight. I guess I'll just start, so that we have a public hearing for the consideration of the state plan, or state paid family medical leave insurance program. I will ask for a vote to open the public hearing.
I'll move to open the public hearing.
Thank you, Member Woodward. A second?
Second.
Thank you, Member Anderson. Can we please vote?
Member Anderson?
Aye.
Member Noonan Camp?
Aye.
Member Russell?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Ward?
Aye.
Member Wink?
Aye.
Member Woodward?
Aye.
Mayor Sierra?
Aye.
Let the record show seven aces.
Perfect. We have Deputy City Attorney Victoria McDermott and Director of Human Resources Sean Wiskey to talk about the state play, state paid family medical leave insurance program. Good evening, Deputy City Attorney.
Thank you, and thank you for having us again. Good evening.
Really quickly, I just need to swear everybody in that plans to provide any type of comment or testimony. Even if you're online, if you want to raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in this matter now being heard by the Inglewood City Council?
I do.
Okay, thank you. When you speak, just please state your name and title for the record, please.
Yes, hi again, good evening. I'm Victoria McDermott. I'm the Deputy City Attorney for the City of Inglewood. As you, we're here to hold a public hearing and provide for public comment prior to council's consideration of a vote to approve a resolution to opt out of the state-run family program. The vote on that resolution item is set for June twentieth. As you may recall, we've presented a study session on this topic earlier in April. But just to kind of remind what the issues are, all municipalities are included in the state-run program unless they opt out by a vote of their governing body, and they will be included and remain in that program for a minimum of three years. As we've mentioned in the study session, staff recommends opting out of this program because the city currently already provides similar benefits, which is that the state-run program would also be offering. Additionally, this is a new program with rulemaking still underway. The city can always reassess and elect to participate at a later date after rulemaking is finalized. And if the city opts out, all that means is that the employer contribution portion is not a liability of the city, and employees themselves can elect to remain in the program and only pay the employee premium portion without, again, without the employer being responsible and also still be able to receive the same benefits. Now, under the rulemaking that has been written, we're required to hold this public hearing and allow for the opportunity for interested persons to comment to the governing body. We've provided a special notice to employees to come and participate, and we are opening the floor to any comment from the public. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy City Attorney. Any, any questions for the Deputy City Attorney before I ask Director Wiskey, he has any comments, but? Member Noonan Camp?
Yes, thank you for being here. I just had a question about the comment you just made, that employees can still opt into the program even if the city opts out. Is that correct?
That's correct, because this is, the family program is administered by the state. It's not administered by the city.
Can employees opt in to that and receive benefits from that program while also receiving the paid family leave benefits that the city provides as well?
So that is something that would be a policy consideration for the city, and the current thinking on that is to amend our salary continuation program so that the employee would have the option to either participate in salary continuation or, if they so elect, family. Okay, thank you. And just to comment on that as well, the purpose behind that is to avoid the ability to almost be twenty-four weeks as opposed to twelve.
Any other questions from council? Member Russell?
Thank you, and thank you for the presentation. Have you heard any feedback from any employees about this?
Thank you for asking that. Today, the city held a town hall with employees to provide an overview and to get questions. So the feedback we've received has been in the nature of just general questions about how this would work. There's not been any indication, at least that our office has received, or that my understanding is that the, or human resources has received to indicate hostility or negative feedback.
Okay, and so would employees feel comfortable to share either way? I mean, do you think there would be any reason that they might not?
You mean, might feel uncomfortable sharing concerns?
Yes.
You know, it's hard for me to speak to that because I'm not in their minds, but I do understand perhaps there might be reluctance to do so, but we did provide, in connection with the town hall, the ability to submit comments and questions beforehand, which always could have been submitted anonymously.
Right, and, I mean, I'm okay, I understand why staff doesn't want to do this, and so, all right, well, we'll wait and see. So, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Member Russell. Any other questions from council?
Mayor, if I could add to Attorney McDermott's comments, in the town hall meeting, we did have very, very direct questions and frank conversation, and I think we were really able to, you know, lay any concerns, explain both policies, and as Attorney McDermott said, it was, they were also given the ability to submit comments anonymously through a form that we use every other month with our Grub Club event, and so they're very used to the format, and we didn't get any questions through that. But we did have a very frank dialogue with about fifty employees on the call today.
I'm sorry, was that five zero?
I'm sorry, five zero, yes, thank you. Member Wink?
Thank you. I think City Manager's comment just clarified, I'm actually clarifying, Member Russell just said something like, thank you, like, something about the employees being against this. Did I hear that correctly? I don't want to misspeak for you, Member Russell, because I didn't...
I was just basically asking a question, you know, to see if there was any negative feedback from employees about this, so...
And there wasn't, and it was clearly stated.
Right.
Okay, good, thank you. I completely heard something else, so thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Member Wink. No other questions from council? Director Wiskey, did you have anything to add?
I have nothing further to add, no.
Okay.
Mayor, I do have one thing to add, because the question, if the question is, was there any opposition? There was one element of the state's program that they did like, a little bit better than ours, and that was spousal, someone that you're caring for with salary continuation. It did appear that that was better. But overall, because it, our plan provides better coverage for the employee, it appeared from the comments that we heard today and the conversation in the chat, that they were, everyone ultimately was supportive that was on the call today.
Thank you, City Manager Lewis. Any further feedback from council, or any other questions from council? Seeing none, I will now open it up to the public.
We do just have one person who has signed up, Heather.
And?
If I could just swear you in, Heather. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in this matter now being heard by the Inglewood City Council?
Yes.
Great, just state your name and address for the record.
Can I use this address?
Well, yeah, that's fine.
Okay, Heather Driscoll, one thousand Inglewood Parkway. So obviously, I'm an employee of the city, and I am speaking in favor of opposing the family medical leave insurance offered by the state. And so unfortunately, I'm somebody that has to utilize the salary continuation every once in a while, and I support it to opt out because the city's program is very nice. It's at no cost to an employee, and it has come in very helpful, so I'm a big fan of it. And I just wanted to say thank you to the city's directors and City Manager Lewis, and everybody else involved on coming up with that, as well as to you, council, for actually listening to what city employees have to say regarding this matter. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Driscoll. Any questions for Ms. Driscoll? No, seems good. Ms. Driscoll, thank you very much for your time tonight. Does that conclude comments from the public? Perfect, if no one else wants to speak on this matter, Member Woodward?
I'll move to close the public hearing.
You beat me to it. Could I get a second?
Second.
Thank you, Member Noonan Camp. Can we please vote?
Member Anderson?
Aye.
Member Noonan Camp?
Aye.
Member Russell?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Ward?
Aye.
Member Wink?
Aye.
Member Woodward?
Aye.
Mayor Sierra?
Aye.
Let the record show seven aces.
Thank you. Now, moving on to agenda item eleven, eleven C one is a resolution for staff recommends approval of contractual services in the amount of no more than one hundred and seventy-five thousand to conduct a comprehensive classification and compensation study. Up here next, on the other side of the page, is Director of Human Resources Sean Wiskey and Senior Human Resources Business Partner Alexa Han Dunn. I think it's just you tonight, Director Wiskey.
It is just me tonight, Mayor, so, yes. So thank you for the time tonight, Mayor, and thank you, council, for the, for the time to talk to you about the class and comp study. So first, I want to get into the background of the, of where the city has been. The last study had been conducted back in two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty. It was more of a compensation study than a classification study, and I'll get into that in a little bit. Since two thousand nineteen, as we all know, the world has changed significantly. Inflation, market rates have gone through the roof regarding cost of living, as has been alluded to earlier during this meeting. On May second of this year, council did approve a supplemental budget that included the one hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars for the class and comp analysis and implementation. The city had gone out to bid as part of this initiative, and we received three responses. The response that we ultimately are asking council to approve is from Gallagher. Gallagher Benefit Services submitted the lowest quote. And in addition, as part of a bonus, really Gallagher has been a part of the city's benefits administration for almost a decade in various capacities. Currently, right now, they are our benefits broker. They help us to negotiate our benefits offerings at the city, our, uh, benefits offerings at the city, and so the fact that they came in with the lowest quote, when they already understand the city and understand what the city is looking for, uh, we found, uh, uh, very promising. So if we go to the next slide, Stephanie. So the overall recommendation, um, is that the, uh, the council approve, um, HR, uh, entering into a contract with Gallagher Benefit Services. Um, this would result in a comprehensive, uh, classification and compensation analysis and system implementation. And some of the outcomes that we're looking for, uh, on the next slide, um, will be to ensure pay equity and compliance with the Equal Pay for Equal Work Act. Uh, this will also help, uh, assist the city attorney's office with the, uh, equal pay audit that, uh, they're currently, uh, conducting. Uh, positions in, uh, this, it positions the city, um, to be competitive, uh, in an employer of choice. Uh, as everybody knows, right now, finding good talent is very difficult. Um, and so ensuring that we have, uh, competitive pay, competitive benefits, um, an overall, uh, uh, compensation system that will drive employee attraction, retention, and engagement is really what we're looking to do here. Um, we also want to clarify, uh, career development opportunities. Our current, uh, system that we have right now, um, has over 300 classifications, um, for workforce, uh, full-time workforce of about 400, um, employees. So, uh, that's a lot of classifications for such a small workforce, um, and it creates confusion as far as career ladders go, um, and where employees can see themselves moving throughout the organization. So we want to get alignment with that as well. Um, and then finally, we need to create a clear philosophy on pay, our compensation philosophy. Where does the city want to be relative to the market? Um, that's something that we're going to be developing, uh, in conjunction with our contract. Uh, next slide. So I did go over some of the reasons for the study earlier, but, um, we do need to, uh, get our class and comp data up to date. Uh, the last, uh, study was done in 2019, 20, or in 2020, and as I mentioned, it was more of a compensation study, uh, not so much a classification study, and classification is really where the meat and potatoes, uh, comes into play, and I'll, I'll, uh, get into more of that. Um, existing titles may not accurately match job functions. Uh, the prior study did not review job descriptions, uh, did not ensure that a job titled, for example, analyst, um, is performing work that we find commensurate with the work of an analyst. Um, what the last study merely did was look at the title of analyst and go out to the market and say, oh, well, analysts are paid X amount of dollars, and that's the city of Inglewood should pay, without looking at the actual apples-to-apples comparison. So we don't know if we're overpaying or underpaying for certain jobs. Um, employees, part-time staff, oh, Stephanie, if you can go back, sorry, uh, some employees, such as part-time staff, I do not have a classification and compensation structure. So there are no, uh, definitive ranges for certain part-time employees, um, and there's no consistent job descriptions. Um, it's, it's really, uh, there is no system in place for part-time employees right now, unfortunately. Um, and as I mentioned, the current structure does not provide clear, consistent pathways for career advancement or pay advancement, um, based off of, if you get a new certification, if you take on, uh, additional duties, what does that look like regarding your classification? How does that impact your classification? Um, and so we don't have a system right now to be able to flex and, um, change if we need to change, uh, based off of, um, needs for the city, or if a certain job becomes obsolete, there's no system right now for us to be able to write against that. And, next slide. So the, the timeline for this project, um, it's roughly going to take seven to eight months, um, which is, uh, a very fast and aggressive, uh, timeline for a project of this size. Um, as I mentioned, the last, uh, study that we did, uh, in 2019, that was purely a compensation study. Uh, compensation studies can be done in four, six, eight weeks. Um, it, you know, it takes seven to eight months, um, at a minimum to do a comprehensive classification compensation system. So, uh, we anticipate starting in late June, early July, and wrapping up the project in February or March of next year. Um, and there's going to be four phases. Um, first, we're going to have project initiation and strategy development. This is where Gallagher would come in, do an assessment of the city, talk with stakeholders, uh, identify what the city is specifically looking for and making sure that, uh, alignment i- is there. Um, phase two is going to be the job evaluation. This is that, uh, in classification study, this is the part that was missing from that last study in 2019. So this study is going to evaluate every single job description in the city. We're going to make sure that the job description accurately reflects what that employee is doing, and we're going to then go out to the market in phase three, and we're going to compare those new, uh, finalized job descriptions and revised job descriptions, apples-to-apples out there in the market, to make sure that we have accurate data and that we're comparing the same information based off of the jobs that, uh, our employees are currently doing. And then finally, we're going to have, uh, the project finalization, um, and we're going to, uh, get the reports, um, and implement this entire process, uh, along with the, uh, the contractor, Gallagher. Uh, that's also a phase that, um, did not exist last time. Um, last time, the contractor that the city, uh, used for the compensation study essentially gathered the data and handed it to the HR department and, uh, left it to the HR department to implement. And so I, uh, welcome any questions that you have on, uh, this ask that I have with you tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Wysocki. Any questions from council? Member Russell.
Thank you. Um, I have a couple of questions. So I, I know that the study back in 2019 was different, but, um, if we get what we're looking for, are we going to have to be doing these studies every couple of years?
No, and that's exactly, uh, the purpose of putting forward this investment now, so that we can maintain our structure and maintain the system into the future. Uh, the city last year, um, added a class and comp position to the HR department. That class and comp position, uh, will be responsible for maintaining the system that we get implemented, um, so that we do not have to continue going out to the market to pay a third party to do this. Uh, what, what lacked last time was the maintenance of the system and, and actual implementation. Um, it just, unfortunately, it seemed like staff time, uh, for whatever reason, uh, was not able to fully implement what we were given last time.
Okay, thank you. And then I have another question on attachment A, the statement of work under summary, I think it says, "The work involves an analysis of the city's current classification and compensation structure, a comprehensive market survey and benchmarking comparison, development of new classification and compensation structure, and establishment of a sustainable classification and compensation system and methodology. Upon completion of the project, city staff will evaluate." So, so what does that mean? City staff will evaluate?
Correct, so, um, it's a policy decision, um, when we are looking at the data and the results of the data. So if we go out to market and market, uh, says that, uh, certain classifications require an eight or nine percent increase in order to be competitive, um, we need to evaluate to make sure, one, can we afford that? Two, if we cannot afford that, what can we afford to get as competitive as we can? So that's where that evaluation comes into play, um, because it's not just, this is what the market pays, so this is what we're going to pay. We need to make sure that that pay is sustainable and that we can continue, uh, to have a sustainable system into the future. Um, and so that's that evaluation portion.
Okay, thank you very much, I appreciate that.
Thank you, Member Russell. Any other questions from council?
Um, Mayor, would it be okay if I just added a little bit to what?
Sure, Assistant City Manager, go ahead.
Thank you, uh, Tim Dawson, City Manager. Member Russell, just to add to what you mentioned, um, staff will be reviewing, but as it is a policy decision, it will ultimately come to council as part of the budget proposal for 2023. So the reason we want to do this work now, um, is as Director Wysocki said, it would take about seven mon- seven months or so, but the first few months would be spent doing the compensation part. Uh, we want to do it at this timeline so that we will have something to provide to you as part of the budget process, so you can evaluate and determine where we should move forward with it.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that.
Thank you, Assistant City Manager. Member Woodward.
Yes, I have a question on page 22 on the phase and the fees, and then right under that, the, uh, total cost not to exceed $175,000, and then we start heading some asterisks down there regarding job descriptions, $350 per job description, and is in addition to the total cost, uh, additional onsite presentation, uh, days or meetings would cost $4,000 per day. Are you anticipating any of that? Because I don't think there's any contingency in here. I know there isn't any contingency in here from what we approved.
So the, the 175,000 is including all of those, those phases in the contract, is that what you're asking about?
No, I'm asking specifically about the asterisks, which say they are not included, and pricing would be $350 per job description, and it is in addition to the total price, total cost.
Right, so that would be the option if we wanted Gallagher to write or update the job descriptions. That's not something that we anticipate that we'll have Gallagher do. Uh, we have a class and comp, um, specialist here at the city who, uh, is well-versed in, in drafting job descriptions, so that would be something that we would be able to take on. Um, that's not something we anticipate Gallagher doing. They would provide the recommendation to us, um, as far as what aspects of that position may need to be changed, but as far as the actual drafting of that document, that would be something that internal city staff would do.
Okay, great, thank you. And then the second asterisk there?
Yeah, onsite presentation days or meetings. So we're anticipating all of this to be done remotely with the Gallagher team. Um, that's how the city currently operates with Gallagher. Uh, we hold, uh, meetings with them on a regular basis, um, always remote. Uh, we've never had any issues or problems with that type of, uh, relationship, and so we think that that would be appropriate to move forward in this endeavor as well.
So you don't expect to have any additional ones other than what's planned?
Correct, and, and the, the additional are, uh, onsite presentations. So, um, remote meetings are all included with the price.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely.
Mayor Protem.
You just mentioned something that, that does give me pause. Uh, you said that we have a class and compensation specialist on staff. I guess my question is, if we're, if we're paying an FTE to focus on class and compensation, why are we also paying a contractor $175,000 to do a class and comp study?
Yeah, absolutely, it's a great question. Um, so having one FTE, um, that's enough, uh, of, uh, human resource, um, to really just maintain a system. Uh, as far as the actual work to get this type of, uh, project done, we would need an entire team of individuals to be able to have the amount of time necessary to conduct the analysis, really do that apples-to-apples comparison out in the market. That's where a lot of this time is going to be, uh, taken. Imagine, you know, getting a job description document, one, making sure that document's accurate. If it's not accurate, what needs to be added or taken out of that document? And then go and compare that document out in the market to multiple cities and, and potential publics or private sector, uh, entities to price that job. Um, a single, uh, classification study could take two to three weeks to do. Um, so it's not something that is an easy, quick turnaround. Uh, compensation studies can be done very quickly, classification studies cannot. So, um, this is a, a massive, massive project to take a look at 300-plus job descriptions. Uh, we would need a, a team of individuals in order to do it.
Any further questions, Mayor Protem? Any further questions from council? Seeing none. Mr. Wysocki, thank you very much for the presentation. Could I get a motion to approve 11C1?
I'll move 11C1.
Thank you, Member Woodward. Could I get a second?
Second.
Thank you, Member Noonan Camp. Any further comments? Member Noonan Camp.
I'll just say, you know, I had the similar question that Member Russell asked earlier about, it, I think is causing me some heartburn, uh, for some members of council, that we just did a very similar study a couple of years ago, and obviously there's been a lot of changes, and I appreciate the clarification tonight in the presentation about how this one is different, um, and I'm grateful that there's a plan for how this new system will be maintained. We obviously need great talent in the city, and I want to make sure that our compensation is fair in the market, um, but also really don't want to see another request for this in a couple of years to do it again. So really hopeful that, um, I'll be supporting this tonight, but hopeful that, uh, we can build a system that doesn't, uh, require a lot more investment.
Thank you, Member Noonan Camp. Anyone else with further comments? I'll second Member Noonan Camp. I had the same concern in terms of just, will we see something again in three years about something we may have left out of this one? And it sounds like Director Wysocki has looked at this and stated that this is all we would need. Uh, I'm sure at some point we would have to do another classification study just because things change, but I don't want to see it again in two or three years. So I will be s- in support of this tonight, um, but definitely have similar concerns. Member Anderson.
Thank you, Mayor, and, and, um, thank you, Director Wysocki, for the presentation. Uh, I just wanted to follow up with a little question on how the system is maintained. Once we have all these classifications in place, you have sufficient staff to, to ensure that, that the, those, um, that, that the growth rates of those salaries are tracked over time and the classifications are maintained. How long, how long is a classification study like this good for?
Uh, well, that, that would all depend on how, uh, well the system is maintained. So, um, I, you know, as long as I'm here at the city, uh, I will make sure that that system is maintained. Um, it, it really boils down to just, you know, every, every couple of years, uh, we are a part of multiple organizations such as Employers Council where we get data, uh, for the market, um, so we can maintain, uh, our competitiveness regarding our salaries. Um, and, uh, as far as the classification piece go, which again, as I, as I mentioned, is really the meat and potatoes of all of this, um, and where most of the time, uh, is spent, that can be done, uh, on an ongoing basis. When we have that class and comp person in place now, now, uh, every, every time there's a request to look at that position, we're not starting from data that's three years ago, we're starting from data that we know is accurate. We know the job description is accurate, so it's really just a, a matter of what's new in the job or what's, what's different about the job that you're performing now versus the job as it's written in the job description, and just making that correction as we go along. Um, what we unfortunately have happened, we have not, um, addressed classifications in the city, um, a- at least since 2016, potentially prior to that. So our job descriptions are going on at least a decade, um, of being outdated almost.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Protem.
Yeah, I'm sympathetic to the comments that have been made earlier in support of this. I'm also really troubled by the fact that two years ago, we did a similar project. And I, I think we're in a time of rapidly evolving market conditions. I worry that we might be buying data that's not going to be useful to us in another year or two, uh, if something significant happens to the economy as current conditions might indicate is inevitable at this point. So I, I support the idea that's being put forward, but I'm, I'm not good on the timing. I think this just might be the wrong time to do this, um, and for that reason, it looks like it'll pass, but, uh, it will not be getting my vote tonight.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Member Russell.
And, uh, along with that, I mean, I, I do have another question. Um, we've had a huge employee turnover in the last couple of years, and is this going to change that? Do you see that that will help with that? with that?
We certainly believe that it will. Um, that's part of the reason that we're, uh, asking for, for this, uh, sum of money, which I know is substantial. Uh, but we believe that this will help, um, with the recruitment, with the retention, and it will set us up for, uh, success in the future. Um, you know, this is a seven, eight-month project, so it's not going to happen overnight. But, uh, it, it certainly, certainly is going to help with the recruiting and retention. Um, we have been conducting exit interviews. Um, you know, the pay and benefits is on the top of people's minds. There, there's other issues that we're, uh, trying to address as well. But these are things that people are concerned about.
Okay, I, I appreciate that. I do have, I do share the same concerns that the Mayor Protem has. And, um, I, I do think the timing on this is, um, is not great. So I won't be supporting it tonight, but I do understand what you're trying to address. I, I want those things addressed. Um, so anyway, thank you.
Mayor, can I add a caveat to Director Weiskey's last comment?
Sure, City Manager.
Uh, just want to add that this study alone will not solve, um, the problem, but it will set us up to be able to solve the problem. Um, as, um, Director Weiskey mentioned, you know, we're losing professional employees on a weekly basis now to the private sector in other cities who have done this work. And, and for a lack of a better term, we're behind. And so we are playing catch-up. This is, in my opinion, a mission-critical task. This study is wholly and completely different than what we did two years ago. Um, we did a compensation survey, basically looking at our benchmark cities and seeing what they paid. We were not comparing job descriptions to job descriptions in, in that survey. Um, it was a very inexpensive survey compared to this, and we got what we paid for. Um, this will really look at job descriptions and compare the job descriptions with our benchmark cities to see, you know, where the market is. So we do feel like it's a very important study.
Thank you, City Manager Lewis. Any other further comments? Seeing none. Can we please vote?
Member Anderson?
Aye.
Member Noonan Camp?
Aye.
Member Russell?
Nay.
Mayor Protem Ward?
Nay.
Member Wink?
Aye.
Member Woodward?
Aye.
Mayor Sierra?
Aye.
Let the record show five ayes and two nays, the two nays being Councilmember Russell and Mayor Protem Ward.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Director Weiskey, for your time tonight. And now moving on to Agenda Item Twelve, Mayor's Choice. Uh, in the interest of time, I have nothing tonight. Wait for next week. I'll open it for Councilmembers' Choice. Member Noonan Camp.
Yeah, I have just a couple of quick things. Um, one, for any citizens who are watching, I want to remind folks that I have a community coffee this Wednesday at Grow and Gather from eight to nine-thirty a.m. if anyone wants to swing by. Also have a report out. The Cultural Arts Commission met, uh, last week. And they are discussing a couple, uh, cool projects. One is they are looking at median art for some of the, um, median pedestals that we have in the city. So looking at, uh, what are the options about maybe commissioning new art or finding existing art to add to, um, the art in the city? They are also working on a call for artists and an artist meet and greet, which is coming up in July. It's going to be held at Devil's Head Distillery. Uh, if folks and especially artists in the community have questions about attending that event and learning how they can, um, participate in art events in the city, please reach out to me and I can get folks connected, but that's coming up soon. Um, and on the topic of the Cultural Arts Commission, I did want to bring up for this council, um, we asked the CAC to vote on the MOA art, uh, that has been put in their proposal to the city if the city would like to lease any of the art or retain any of the art in the community. Uh, the CAC did vote on the, the pieces that they value kind of the most in their opinion. Um, and so we have that information. And so I do want to bring it up to this body if we would like to do something with that, if we want to address that proposal, um, and put it maybe on a future study session and decide what we want to do with, um, MOA.
Thank you, Member Noonan Camp. What's the timing on the MOA art?
That's a probably question for the City Manager.
Thank you for the question, Mayor, and for the comments, Member Noonan Camp. We have received, uh, notice through, um, our Director of Parks, Recreation and Library Gulf, who is also the staff liaison for the CAC. Um, we have received notification from the MOA to her that, um, they would like an answer really within the next thirty days, um, as they are getting requests for pieces from other end-users that could potentially use those pieces. So we would like to move forward with this with some haste if council still desires to do so.
Well, based on our calendar, that means that we got to do it in two weeks then.
We'll see if we can get, explain the situation and, uh, have them let us do that in July.
Thank you, City Manager. I'll be happy to have it as a study session item. Um, Member Anderson.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, two things tonight. Uh, first of all, I wanted to announce that we're having our first service day on June eighteenth of the year. We're going to do another one in September, on September tenth, um, with, be a tool. So we'll be helping several homeowners, elderly, low-income and disabled homeowners fix up their homes, doing fence projects, yard cleanup, those kind of things. So we're still seeking volunteers for that. Uh, so if any citizens are still listening, I, I see we have a couple in the audience here, go sign up tonight. Um, and it's always fun to have council members volunteer as well. Um, any city, city staff members who'd like to. So I'm just, uh, recruiting some volunteers tonight for that. We've got some great homes lined up. Could appreciate the help volunteering on that as well. Um, the other thing was this is a request from the Sustainability Commission. They had a discussion about their bylaws, um, and, and, uh, one request for City Council was to see if we could ch- convert one of their, um, nine members to an alternate member so that they have a little, um, hedge against potential quorum issues in the future. So I wanted to bring that before council to see if we could modify our, um, enabling ordinance to, uh, for the Sustainability Commission to, um, to change one of those members to a, um, to an alternate. If, could we go around and see if we have council support to, to do that change?
We've got a couple of other items, uh, regarding, okay, so this is sustainability. So right now it's nine current members and make it eight?
Yeah, make it eight plus an alternate. Right, and right now they're down one, so they were, they were just requesting that we, uh, potentially do that for, for the future so that they could have, that was, yeah, that was one of their.
Could I ask a, a second question on that?
Yeah.
What's the reasoning behind making one percent an alternate? Is it a quorum issue or?
That's, that was the idea is that they would have, yeah, if they, if they were down, they could have an alternate who could, uh, who could step in and help them meet quorum. If, so lower their quorum number, I believe, and then, then they would be able to have the, have the alternate step into that.
I'll go around the room. Um, Mayor Protem, do you want to start off?
Yeah, I think it's best to have an odd number of members on any body. So I would suggest seven plus two alternates as opposed to eight plus one.
Let me s- let me make, guys, we had that discussion, so maybe, um, let me, let me look back at this, what they wrote up, make sure.
Sounds good. While you're researching that, do you mind if I go back to the original question for MOA and the public art? Would you guys be okay with having that as a study session item?
Oh, yeah, sorry.
No, that's fine. It's like I was gonna, I was gonna get that too.
Yes.
Yes. Anybody in disagreement with not having it as a study session item? Well, that is a study, study session item. And actually, I'll just jump in on the sustainability. It's a, it's, it's, it's been a popular committee, and I'd hate to go down to two alternates instead of having nine current members. Um, unless there's a, a specific reason behind it, I, I, on first pass, I'm, uh, I'm not wild about the idea to move, um, a member to alternate. So that's just original thought and let's memorize it so you can, uh, swing on.
They want a request, um, in addition.
That seem like a lot.
I think. Like, actually, the, the, what they wrote here doesn't, doesn't specify a, a specific number. They were just, wanted to see if, if council would be willing to modify it to allow for an, an additional alternate or some, something that would satisfy their desires.
Yeah, instead of one, we had to have two alternates, but nine regular members.
Potentially.
So what, this is, yeah. Sustainability Commission requests City Council appoint up to three alternate members.
Your mic.
Sorry. They require, uh, they, yeah, Sustainability Commission requests City Council appoint up to three alternate members. So I think they want additional members to the commission.
That would make sense.
So, sorry, I was miss, misrepresenting what they wanted.
Went the other way.
It's, it's past nine-thirty. We're not operating at full capacity here. At least I'm not.
Battery is not fully charged. Uh, I would be okay with, um, considering that item. Member Noonan Camp, did you want to weigh in, set your lights on?
Yeah, I was just going to say, as the former chair of one of these boards and commissions, quorum is a, is a real problem sometimes, and it's hard to have some people show up at a meeting and then have to cancel the meeting because you don't have enough people. Um, and so I'm open to having the conversation. I do want maybe how we do this to be equitable. And so before we make a decision, I would want more information on exactly what the ask is. And is this, you know, more than what other commissions are getting, and just make sure everything's kind of staying in turn. And then I would also request that it be, I would also request that it be, um, done in conjunction with the next, uh, round of appointments.
Thank you, Member Noonan Camp. Actually, City Attorney, did you want to jump in?
Uh, yes. Um, I, my office actually assisted the Sustainability Commission in a review of their bylaws. And they, um, have actually amended their bylaws to include a provision that up to three, uh, alternates could be appointed, but it's at the, um, the pleasure of the City Council. Um, we did, uh, amend municipal code to, um, specifically allow City Council to appoint alternates and for the alternates to serve in the place of a member that's absent. So it's up to City Council, but it, uh, they did amend their bylaws to provide for that.
Thank you, City Attorney, Member Anderson.
So are you saying we don't need to do an ordinance change for it? It's already allowed for in the ordinance? Oh, so we could just decide when we go to do the appointments if we want to appoint extra? All right, well.
Yes.
So if we have a, if it's, it's a, it's a popular commission, if we get extra people and, and we have space for them, we can appoint them potentially at that time?
Exactly.
Well, there you go. Five minutes for that, so. Joking, Member Russell.
Thank you. I just want to weigh in on that. I, I have a problem with appointing three alternates. Um, if people are committed to that board and commission, and one of our questions always has been, do you have time? And if you don't have time, then we need to start enforcing the rules that we have. Three absences and the board can remove them. And, um, so I, I don't want to get into that. One alternate that shows up can vote whenever, um, the rest of the board isn't there, but that's, that's all I have with that. Thank you.
Member Woodward?
I'm in support of, uh, keeping it the way that it's been modified right now, and if we need to have a study session to talk further about it, we do it then.
Thank you, Member Woodward. Mayor Protem. Go ahead.
Can I go on to my member's choice, sir?
Well, I was going to say, I think we are done on this topic. Think we have the information we need. So, yeah, I think if we have additional people for next week's board and commission, potentially they can be added as alternates, so. Um, yes, now, your turn.
This one may sound a little strange, but I do have a council request. Uh, we, uh, earlier tonight heard from someone who lives uh, further east in our county, whose address is the city of Inglewood. So I'm wondering if there is perhaps an opportunity to coordinate with the postal service and say, this Inglewood thing out east of Greenwood Village is confusing people. There's been a lot of municipality changes in that area. Perhaps you might consider adopting some different municipality name for a municipality that's closer to where those people live rather than Inglewood. Um, I know the postal service doesn't move quickly, uh, but, uh, my parents once lived in unincorporated Rappel County, city of Centennial Incorporated, and about five years later, their address was changed from Littleton to Centennial because they were in Centennial. So, uh, I think we might have an opportunity here to get the ball rolling on that if we haven't investigated it recently. Um, I would like to end the Inglewood where it begins and ends confusion, uh, if we can.
Do you have any suggestions on a new name? No, I'm joking. Not Inglewood.
Not Inglewood.
Um, Member Woodward?
No, I think there are benefits to having the home of the Broncos being in Inglewood, which is their address.
But it's not. It's not Inglewood.
I know it isn't.
Uh, there's benefits to having a counterfeit hundred-dollar bill if you can spend it somewhere, but.
You know what? The Inglewood Federal Penitentiary is not in Inglewood either. But it's out there on Quincy. So anyway, I just wanted to mention that, or as a reminder to everybody here, Thursday, six p.m. to eight p.m. volunteer appreciation at Pirate's Cove. So please have that on your calendar, get your swimsuits, all that stuff. Enjoy. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Woodward. Anyone else? Member Russell.
Um, yes, I do have a question, and this is about the Inglewood Ashbore subsidy application. Um, I did get a, an email from a constituent that had already had it done, and then they applied and they were denied. And is, I mean, the person thinks it's not a great policy, but what is the difference if they've already had it done and they apply?
Thank you, Member Russell. Um, this, I think, is the same question that we got into when we were talking about vaccine incentives and some of our economic incentives. It's not an incentive if someone's already done it and then you're paying them. It's just a handout. So what we're trying to do with the grant program is, um, incentivize people to try to encourage people to do it who have not yet done it.
Okay, that answers that question, so, um, and Mr., or Mayor Protem Ward, do you really want staff to waste time on postal zip codes? That, that area of town, if they want to be annexed by somebody, unless you want to annex them.
Yes.
Thank you.
And now I think that concludes Councilmember's Choice, and now we're over to City Manager's support.
Thank you, Mayor. I've got two, um, reports tonight, one quick and one a little bit longer. So we'll start with Assistant City Manager Dodd.
Uh, thanks, City Manager Lewis, and, uh, Mayor and members of council. I've run, uh, council about a year and a half ago. May remember that, um, the U.S. Senate and U.S. Congress, as representatives, last year restarted the old pork barrel spending program, but they renamed it, uh, much nicer, I guess, name of congressionally-directed spending, uh, which basically allows municipalities and nonprofits to apply to their offices, uh, their representatives and also senators for funding for very specific projects. We applied for a few last year. We didn't get any. Uh, we also applied for a few this year, um, after meeting, uh, Mayor, City Manager and I and others, uh, met with representatives of, of, um, Senator Hickenlooper. Um, and just tonight found out that one of the projects is moving forward, um, funding for Bridge House. We did ask for about three million dollars, uh, we did ask for three million dollars. The email did not specify whether that was curtailed or, or cut down. Um, but the email did specify that it's going to a subcommittee of the Appropriations Committee. They could not unfortunately provide us with a timeline, um, but we all know how fast Congress acts, so probably by tomorrow I'll be sending you an email. Just kidding. It'll probably be a few months before we hear, um, but we are, um, at least more hopeful than we were last year. And, um, this would really complete the money that Bridge House needs to be able to open here in Inglewood.
Thank you, Assistant City Manager Dodd. Um, the next topic that I'll probably have to have, um, help from our, um, audit supervisor, uh, from Heather Driscoll, um, is with regard to, um, city policy on how we've administered section four-point-four, uh, point-one-dash-five, which is inspection enforcement notices with regard to, um, business license renewals. As you know, back in two thousand nineteen, the City Council did, um, adopt the title four, chapter four, um, revising that, um, to create the biannual sales tax, uh, sales and use tax renewal, um, also known as the universal business license. Um, in two thousand twenty-one, um, was the first year that businesses were required to start renewing that. And our platform, um, UniRev's that we use for that sent notifications to all businesses in October saying your renewal is due. Um, so as of January one, two thousand twenty-two, they were, they were out of compliance. Um, as you probably know, as we try to keep you updated, one of our key positions in finance, our auditor position, we have had three candidates, two failed recruitments, um, that, that turned us down, and one that was on the job for six weeks and was offered thirty-two thousand dollars more to the same, um, do, do the same work with billable hours in another organization. In addition, um, to the In addition um to the struggles that businesses have had with COVID, we have not been following um section four dash four dash one dash five and charging twenty five dollars a day. So we wanted to let you know that we have a plan for starting that process. Um, had we started that process as of today, some of our businesses would be owing thirty five hundred dollars in penalties for that, charging that per day. Um, so we are um starting a public information uh campaign to notify businesses that as of September one of this year, we will start charging twenty five dollars a day. Um, but in discussions with Member Russell, um we've uh I felt it was important to let council know that this administrative kind of the way we were enforcing this um policy, um we did give a grace period because this is the first year technically that they have had to do that renewal and they're now in violation, so I'm glad to answer any questions about that, as would would um Ms. Driscoll.
Thank you, City Manager. Any questions from council? Member Russell?
Thank you. Um, I did get, okay, so first of all, I guess I want to ask a couple of questions. So when did staff become aware that we were not enforcing that ordinance?
I guess the question would be which which staff member, because I think finance staff um has uh, you know, known since October twenty twenty one um that um there were businesses that were out of compliance and so we began, you know, trying to get them into compliance. So, you know, I became aware of this when the council, excuse me, the Cora request came through um and got the information from finance. Um, but I fully support the direction that they've taken to take it to a light hand to a new ordinance during, you know, recovery time from a pandemic when they are short-staffed. And so I became aware about six weeks ago.
So I guess after reading all the information and I I knew this back when we passed it, I voted against universal business licenses and now I'm very frustrated that we passed it and it hasn't been enforced. Here's the problem. You got sixty three percent of the businesses that have complied and now what the the thirty six percent were making exceptions for them. That is not fair to the sixty three percent that have complied. And I I guess I'm frustrated, so now the plan that you've presented to us, do we have enough s- staff to implement the plan that's been presented to us?
Well, first off, Councilmember Russell, I would like to state that when UBL went forth, I was fully staffed at that time. I was not anticipating on losing staff, nor did I predict a pandemic was on the forefront of coming to the world. We, with the current plan, um I do know that there's roughly forty percent of businesses that we don't consider in compliance. I did a rough random sample and about forty percent of that forty seem to be businesses that likely could be closed, which was one of the pros of UBL is we could purge the system of businesses that never informed us that they had gone out. I found multiple businesses that haven't filed a tax return in ten years. I can't find a website, no phone number, so they've most likely gone out of business and didn't take the time to let us know. We've now come up with an account closure form that asks why they've closed, did they sell the business, which we're sharing with the community development department so that they have that, because I know that that's something that council um inquires on sometimes too on why a business left. So we've learned from it, but there is a purge that needs to occur with these outstanding businesses that haven't renewed. I don't feel that every one of those is an active current business, but I do know that there are some that are outstanding and so my team will be focusing on those with the timeline that we've been given. I do believe that we will be able to do the outreach and research that is needed by September first.
But here's the problem. Staff made the decision not to implement it. That is a policy decision that should have come back to council and councils should have decided that.
It was discussed with Director Lowe.
And Member Russell, I I do just just uh I respectfully disagree that um staff doesn't have the authority under the council manager form of government to decide how rules are enforced. We are making decisions every day when a police officer pulls someone over on whether or not to give a citation. The way your the laws are enforced is really at the discretion of the city manager. However, I do agree that councils should have been notified of this and I take full responsibility and that's why we're here tonight.
So I guess part of my problem is not so much thinking about this. Yes, I understand there's a problem and we're trying to move forward with this, but council passes ordinances and then they don't get enforced and how much other revenue money is out there because we don't have the staff or we're not enforcing um ordinances that I I mean, I'm I am very concerned about all of the things that are coming forward now. We're going out for bond issues. Now, some of the things get put into a computer. I understand that and it's automatically generated. But if a if a citizen had not brought this up, it still would not be um addressed, so I apologize. I am a little frustrated over this. Thank you.
I can understand your frustration, Councilmember, and I would like to state that with how the UniRev system is set up, either we inactivate a business, which we haven't done to any of these, but if we were to do that, they would not be able to file and complete any tax forms. And so some of the folks that were brought up by citizens are still completing their tax forms. They see the renewal right underneath. It is beyond me why they do not respond to it and it's essentially like trying to get a six-year-old to brush their brush their teeth sometimes and so we are going to um go about what was addressing the council communication and do further outreach in an effort to um go that route and hopefully stating how much they could be charged will light a fire under their pants.
Thank you, Member Woodward.
Yeah, a few questions here. These people that haven't remitted, are they remitting tax payments from the public?
Do you mean the ones that haven't remitted or the ones that haven't renewed?
The ones that haven't renewed, I that haven't remitted their their twenty five or their twenty five dollar fee.
Yes, most of them are current on their tax forms, but haven't completed the renewal workflow.
Okay. Uh, second item. And this is, you know, for City Attorney Niles. From my experience with things like commercial and evictions, that sort of thing, I believe that if you went into a judge and said, we have a and and the person wanted to go to see a judge go into court and said, we have a twenty five dollar remittance that is due and we have twenty five dollar a day late fee. I think the judge would laugh you right out of court. That's my opinion. I'm wondering what your opinion. Publics might be a little different, but I can't believe that that's reasonable. I think it's totally unreasonable and probably unenforceable.
Uh, well, I think it probably depends on the court where it is and the judge, um but I have um at least in a municipal court prosecution in another state, um I have been able to recover that because I argued that every day they didn't renew was a separate violation. So they actually had two hundred violations because every day was a different violation. So could it be enforceable? Yes. Would it always be? That I can't tell you for sure.
Is it reasonable?
Uh, to me, uh, the purpose of the daily fee is to encourage people not to um be late and to renew when they are required to do that. For a a commercial fee for failure to obtain a required business license when they continue to operate in violation of municipal code, I would argue it is reasonable.
I I guess I would think that maybe what we would be doing is making phone calls and I know you don't have the staff to do three thousand of these all at one time, but start making phone calls and lots of letters and stuff like that.
Yes, we will be doing that, sir.
Okay. Yeah, I this one was a new one to me, so I'm but I just really think twenty five dollars a day is outrageous.
That was a part of the code that was in there previously that was not part of the UBL um ordinance. So it's probably something that should have been considered at that time.
Okay. I don't want to hear that it was an ordinance that I signed years ago.
I'm not aware of that.
Thank you, Member Woodward. Anything else?
That's it.
Member Noonan Camp?
Yeah, I just want to say, thank you. I appreciate the work to correct where we're at. Um, I I think the plan is the right one, given some of the circumstances that have already been noted. The one thing that I see as maybe a missed opportunity is engaging with the chamber to help get this word out and our partnership with them, especially as we're trying to maybe track down some folks or just let people know that this deadline is coming. I think that partnering with them on that would be really helpful.
Member Anderson?
Um, I think I I just wanted to weigh the weigh in on the twenty five dollar daily fee. I think it I'm I'm with Member Woodward that I think that's excessive, especially for small businesses. It's hard to keep track of everything you have to file with the city, the state and federal government. A lot of these businesses that are new to filing maybe don't know about the renewal schedule or any number of things, you know, if it's just uh and and I I also think in my experience with with the with using UniRev's, there's some confusion there as to um when, you know, have I successfully filed the correct form or not? I know I've run into that before where I thought I I clicked file and then I found out a month later that I hadn't and I had, you know, had a fee built up. So this stuff, I think I think the system has maybe potential problems too as well and I know that that could be a hassle to fix, but I I mean, one thing I would like to see is just it it's simple for businesses to do and clear that they know what to do, so I'm not, you know, uh um I think we should be following our ordinances, but if the ordinance got has a problem, we're the policymaking body and we need we maybe we need to fix the the ordinance and underline that and then fix the systems if there's system problems that make it more difficult for small businesses as well, so. Um, I I wouldn't want to just stop with getting this enforced, but think about what we can do to to make it better going forward.
No, I completely agree. I wish that UniRev's had some better parameters to work within.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Anderson. Just as a point of clarification for for me, if we were to change the fees, is that's it's just as simple as the fee schedule that we do, like in October, November, or when would that happen?
Uh, I would have to look to see how the fee was established to begin with and my computers ran out of battery, so I can't do it right now. Um, but if it was adopted by ordinance, then most likely we would need to change it by ordinance. Um, but if adopted by resolution, we could change it by resolution or motion, we could change it by motion.
Thank you. Now, I I appreciate all the feedback tonight. Um, just looking over the 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 information, there was a ton of communication that we did do to kind of inform businesses about this, so it's not like we didn't try. Um, and I think the isn't the, I know we keep saying twenty five dollars, but I think that's just the late fee. It's a hundred dollars, isn't it?
Uh, it is a twenty five dollar license fee and then the late fee as it is written in the code is twenty five dollars per day.
So it is a twenty five dollar license fee?
It is, uh, per day violation. Each day is separate.
Okay, so um, yeah, I I guess my only concern here is, you know, if we haven't got a thirty five percent to renew up to this point, what's going to make them change? So um obviously that that fee is going to make them change, but I'm just like, I'm just kind of curious why they haven't done it yet, so.
I wonder the same thing.
I do fully expect compliance when we start enforcing the code as written and the plan is to do that on September first and I can assure council that we will have very high compliance rates moving forward.
And to be extremely clear, we will not be waiving that fee because there will be additional emails and paper letters sent out and so it will not be waived for a million dollar company. It will not be waived for a mom and pop company. It will be applied the same to every business that is not in compliance at that time.
Thank you. Member Russell?
So is it mostly mom and pop companies or home businesses, or do you have any idea what they what the businesses are that's?
So out of the sample that I did, it was mostly businesses that aren't within the city and there were some smaller businesses and a couple random larger ones that I again don't understand why they haven't, they just overlook it every month or every quarter when they file their tax return.
Well, and I do think some of it is because we haven't been following through or whatever and and I think if we move forward and follow through, I really don't think twenty five dollars a day is unreasonable because it is motivation not to forget it. So.
Yeah, on a variety of the businesses that I did sample, a lot of them, their tax liability for the past year ranged from zero to up to thirty six thousand dollars, but a lot of them fell into about five hundred dollar a year range, so they would qualify for de minimis license if they applied in that manner, but they haven't. We've only received about twenty to thirty de minimis license applications to date.
Thank you.
Uh, Member Anderson?
So am I under here, am I understanding correctly that there's a lot of businesses that are filing their tax their quarterly tax returns but not filing their sales tax license renewal?
Yes, which it all falls under the open task and that is one of the baffling things and we've sent out three email reminders from the UniRev system that says you have a renewal task outstanding and it shows up right below or above, not quite sure, but under their open task, so they see it and it's deliberately being ignored.
Is there, I mean, just thinking in terms of simplicity, if these people are already getting online and filling out a form, is it possible to just make it a part of the tech, the renewal, a part of their quarterly filing and just add that on to like, I don't uh obviously there's some disconnect there that they're not seeing that, but I I totally understand that, having used UniRev's for a number of years. And and you think you filled in and I'll have a task that says it, you know, says it's open from previous times that I thought I'd finished, so I I would just, I want things to be really simple for the businesses, so if we can figure out a way that if they're already on there filing stuff, that not filing it is kind of not an option in order to pay their sales tax, I I think that would be wonderful, but.
No, I agree a hundred percent. However, if we were to do that, it would alter the workflow and so everybody that receives a quarterly or monthly return would get the renewal workflow again and then we would get the three thousand plus businesses that have renewed freaking out thinking that we would like them to renew again. So it's a double edged sword, unfortunately.
Member Woodward?
Yeah, a question on if if I was somebody that was selling something at the Malley Bazaar, Holiday Bazaar, would I be doing this, having to uh submit this UBI or?
Uh, no. So from my understanding, the Malley Bazaar has an event coordinator that collects everybody's information, collects the taxes and files a single tax return through the Malley Center to the city.
Correct, okay. How about if it was a Tupperware salesperson at home, parties or whatever?
Yes, they technically should have a license with us. We have a few Mary Kay ladies and some other um, you know, home-based businesses that are licensed, Pampered Chef, stuff like that.
All right, thank you.
Absolutely.
Mayor Protem?
As I'm listening to the conversation tonight, I'm noticing the probability of sort of a an opportunity to improve some of our administrative procedures relative to taxation in the city in general. I believe it was asserted that, you know, well, once we start charging this, we're just going to charge everybody and there's going to be no exceptions. And my question is, if somebody feels like they were unfairly treated, how do they deal with that? Uh, is there some opportunity or do they just take us straight to district court and say, hey, this fine is bogus, I want to challenge it? If we had a local set of codes uh that covered administrative procedures similar to what other government agencies I worked for i- it over the course of my career have, I think that would be helpful as well because we'd have something to lean into saying, hey, this is the first time the business has done this. Our procedure by rule is, you know, the first time it occurs, if it's not a deliberate, an obviously deliberate violation, we can waive or we have an administrative hearing and make a determination on what fine is going to be levied, but this process strikes me as a little bit of sort of random almost.
Um, our code does state that I know for at least for assessments that there can be a hearing request in front of the Director of Finance, which in this case would be Director Lowe, and they can make a determination and it is at the director's discretion to waive penalties and interest as they deem fit. which in this case would be Director Lowe, and they can make a determination, and it is at the director's discretion to waive penalties and interest as they deem fit.
Okay, so we have some sort of a process, but I'm, I'm not hearing a lot about, you know, specific rules that would apply in that process.
No, I agree a hundred percent, and I believe that is one thing that's on the agenda for the code revamp is to update it, to make it a little clearer and so that we can work those type of items in.
Okay, that would definitely make me more comfortable if something like this were to come forward in the future. I know you've assured us that it won't, but, um, things happen. I'm also very hesitant to sort of slap staff on the wrist when something like this happens. It's being brought forward to us tonight because it happened. We're being informed of what occurred. And while I'm not happy that this occurred, uh, I'm also not prepared to dress any specific person down for what has happened. I'm just glad to know that we're addressing this ongoing problem in the, in the city and, and finding a way to, to deal with it. So thanks for standing there tonight, explaining the process to us and letting us know what we plan to do going forward.
Thank you, and I appreciate the understanding.
Any further comments from council? See, now, city manager, I think you have the information, so. Ms. Driscoll, thank you very much for speaking tonight.
Yes, thank you.
Anything else, city manager Lewis? See, now, we are now adjourned. Everyone, oh, I'm sorry, city attorney, not yet.
I actually had a report, I think, on the agenda.
Oh, did you?
Uh, yes. Well, it's unusual. Uh, very quickly though, tonight, um, we, uh, approved an I G A, um, for an ordinance first reading to create the regional council for the opioid settlement. As part of the, um, regional council agreement, um, we need to consider two different people. All right, I guess it could be one person, but, um, we need to designate someone that will be a non-voting representative to attend the regional council meetings. And we also need to designate, uh, in conjunction with Sheridan and Littleton, our joint voting representative to serve on the council. Um, I have been the city's representative in this formation process. Um, and I, I would be happy to continue to serve, um, in the non-voting capacity to ensure council stays up to date. Um, but it's completely up to council. Um, it should either be an elected official or an employee. Um, and from the, um, coordinating with Littleton and Sheridan, um, both Sean and I have reached out to see what their thoughts are, and we will bring that to council. Um, the reason I'm bringing it now is because, um, the regional council hopes to begin operating in July. They have to approve, uh, a two-year plan before they can receive any opioid settlement funds. Unlike the settlement funds for cities, we do not have to approve a plan prior to receipt of funds. So they hope to get started in July, um, but I wanted to lay the groundwork, start thinking about it, and then we can talk about it again at a later meeting.
City attorney, do we know the date that they're planning to meet in July?
It hasn't been set yet.
Okay. We may have to discuss that in two weeks as well, so, just giving you a heads up. Anything else, city attorney?
No, that's it. Thank you.
All right. Now this time it's, uh, we are adjourned. Everyone, have a good evening.